All right, it's six o'clock and so we're going to go ahead and get started with our special meeting of the Measure X Citizen Oversight Committee. We'll bring this meeting to order. Does our recording secretary need to take a roll now, or is it after a pledge?
After a pledge, right?
All right, so let's go ahead and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands in commandation under God and indivisible by the liberty and justice of our own.
Roll call Chairperson Carpenter.
I'm here.
Vice Chair Johnson.
Present.
Committee Member Landver Verdi.
Present.
Committee Member Leo.
Here.
Committee Member Lugo.
Present.
Committee Member Martinez.
Present.
We have a quorum.
At this time, we'll take public comments from anyone that would like to speak on any general item. Do we have anything this evening?
Do we have any cards out?
Yeah, there's.
There are cards over here.
Sounds like it. Yes, for those that aren't, no me, I'm Carl Benninger, and I've been on E-Tech Committee for six years, and also Vice Chair of Cowling right now. But when I was on E-Tech, we presented to the council, and Michelle remembers this, a request for 1.2 million to bring the reforestation of the city. And Bill knows I fought very hard and long trying to get some money to replant trees and to work on the mediums. And when I looked at your notes from the last meeting that you have, I see a lot of good things being done with the Measure X money, but I don't see anything for medium and trees. If we want to make this city look good again, let's put some money into medium trees. And I realize you guys don't have final say, you have to recommend it, but I would love to see some of this Measure X money. And lots of citizens in San Ana expect to see an improvement in streets and trees and mediums. And so if I can push anything, please, let's dedicate some money in that direction. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Benninger. And at this time, I believe that we are on to our consent calendar. And so if anyone would like to remove anything off the consent calendar, now would be the time to do that. Otherwise, we need to have a motion to approve.
I'll move the consent calendar.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, very good. And now we're on to our business calendar, which our first item is with our City Attorney to do a presentation. So thank you very much. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, members of the Measure X Citizen Oversight Committee. I'm just going to briefly go over some provisions under Proposition 218, which distinguish between general taxes and special taxes, and share with you a cautionary tale that has recently resulted from the adoption of a general tax, much like the City of San Ana's general tax, general sales tax, and which is currently the subject of litigation up in Northern California. I thought it would be helpful, in light of the conversation I think you've had as committee members, but also that the community is having the important issue of how you're going to spend the Measure X revenue, and different perspectives. You have a public speaker even tonight that says, well, I have the perspective that you mentioned trees or beautification or general services to the city. You have other folks that say, we're not doing enough with this money to support public safety, or we're not doing enough with this money to pave our roads, or whatever the perspective may be. And it's a conversation that I think is coming up in a lot of communities, particularly for those communities who I don't remember at the moment, but I think there was over 30 communities in the last election at the time San Ana took its general sales tax forward, that took general sales tax measures to their communities. We're going to see a great number, I think, in these next general elections that we see in the coming year or two, as cities struggle with revenues to pay for all the general services that they have, but also special needs that they have in their communities. So I'm not going to take a whole bunch of your time, just going to get started by telling you, giving you a definition of what a tax is. A tax is a monetary imposition by a governmental body, like the city, on people or property that's all within their jurisdiction, with the sole purpose of raising revenue to support its activities. So kind of a common sense definition. What is important to know is the difference between a general tax or a special tax. Proposition 218 was a voter initiative here in California. It was approved by the citizens. It added provisions to the California Constitution. So it wasn't just a law. It is the law. It was an amendment to our Constitution that defined these taxes and also put into place our procedural requirements for adopting taxes. So a general tax is any tax that's imposed for a general governmental purpose. And there's lots of general governmental purposes, whether it's, again, to trim our trees, pave our roads, support employees who provide daily services, support the planning services that are provided. There was some laws in the past that talked about how a general tax measure, this is when you say to the voters, will you approve this general tax so that I can take all of the revenue from this tax and put it into our general fund to provide those services? The difference between a general tax and a special tax is that a special tax is any tax that's imposed for specific purposes, including a tax that's committed to a specific fund, other than one that is put into a special fund. However, a tax committed to a specific purpose, which is placed in the general fund, can still be held to be a special tax. So just because you take a tax and you say, I'm going to put the revenue into the general fund, it can be deemed a special tax if you're going to say, hey, all of this revenue is going to go to this single purpose. We know all this, we know Proposition 218, we've seen lots of cases that have resulted from the proposition. And so city attorneys and finance staff have been very, very careful about the way we draft the ballot questions that go to your citizens. In your case, you may recall your ballot question is very specific, and it took a lot of time to come up with that question. Staff went over it, it was sent to people who looked at whether that language would be attractive to the voters, it was sent to our offices to determine whether it was legal or not. And so why is it important to know the difference between the general tax and the special tax? It's because for a general tax, you just need 50 plus one, you know, anything over 50% and it's approved. But if it's a special tax, it has to be approved by a 2/3 vote of the electorate. So 2/3. So you're talking, that's a big difference when you're trying to get a tax measure passed. Some people say, well, again, you know, why is this important? It's important because I wanted to share with you this cautionary tale, which quite frankly, as the City City Attorney made me pause when I read about this. In the November 2018 election, when San Ana went forward with its general sales tax, so did the County of Yuba. The County of Yuba placed on its ballot a question that was near, very similar, I wouldn't say identical, very similar to the City of San Ana's ballot measure question. But in their case, the Howard Jarvis Taxpayers Association filed a legal challenge, along with some of their residents. And what they argued is that their ballot measure, that general tax was illegal, and they asked the court to stop allowing its collection on the basis that it constituted a special tax. And they said, because it was a special tax, it did not obtain the 2/3 voter approval that's required by Proposition 218. And a lot of us watched this case because we were looking at their ballot question, looking at our ballot question, and we thought, oh, there's absolutely no way that it'll be struck down. And on September 9th, 2019, the trial court in that case actually struck down their general sales tax. And the court, so they granted judgment in favor of the plaintiffs, and they said it failed to garner the required 2/3 voter approval that was required for the enactment of a special tax. Real briefly, I just want to read for you the difference between the two questions so that you can see that. The City of San Ana's sales tax ballot question read as followed. To maintain effective 911 response, retaining firefighters and police officers, addressing homelessness, fixing streets, maintaining parks, youth and senior services, and, this is what I think is important, unrestricted general revenue purposes, shall the sales tax be increased from 1 and 1/2 cents, increased to 1 and 1/2 cents until 2029, providing approximately $60 million, and then reduced to 1%, providing $40 million annually until 2039, requiring annual audits, citizen oversight, and for San Ana use only? That was your question. This is the question in Yuba County that was struck down. To maintain and protect essential services, such as 911 emergency medical slash fire response, improve wildland fire containment, maintain 24-hour sheriff's patrol, attracting and retaining jobs, businesses, and qualified sheriff's deputies, and other essential services, shall the measure to establish a 1-cent sales tax for 10 years in unincorporated Yuba County, providing $4.3 million, also allowing for a citizen's oversight audit and all revenue controlled locally, be adopted? So the measures, as you can see on their face, look very similar. The difference, however, I believe, in this case is that the court went forward and looked a little bit beyond the ballot question itself. And the court said that they were going to look at several factors in determining whether this was a general tax or a special tax. And the first thing they were going to do is they were going to just look at the plain definition. How do you define a special tax or a general tax? And they looked at the ballot question and they said, well, my goodness, unlike San Ana's, I believe, where we were more inclusive, there was lots of focus in their case, specifically on the law enforcement side. Because when it talked about assuming jobs, it then went to the deputies again. So, well, it might have appeared at first blush to be more of a general tax. As you dig deep into the language itself, it was looking like a special tax. So they were going to look at the definition. They also were going to look at the intent of the voters. And how they looked at the intent of the voters was looking at the arguments that were made, from the citizens, for and against. So they kind of took a look at that as well. They also then looked to what the county in that case was doing after its adoption. And they found that really what they were doing is they were steering this money towards the law enforcement only. So it wasn't only on the face of the ballot measure, it was on what did the voters intend, and then how they were steering the money. And so I wanted to, I was asked actually to come today and talk a little bit about this, because as you have your conversations and your recommendations and carry out your duties under Measure X, I think it's important to keep in mind that we, A, understand that this was intended, the court said, what did you intend for it to be, a general tax? B, that there were a variety of things that you could use this revenue for, not just a single purpose. It wasn't just for homelessness, or just for the police, or just to pave our roads. That it was more broad in nature, and that we really begin to look at how money that goes into the general fund, you know, can it be tracked? I don't know. I don't think so. I think once you put money into a general fund, it's really hard to tell whether particular dollars are, you know, we can tell you how much comes in from the sales tax, we don't say, okay, we're going to pay employee salaries this week, and so we're going to use only Measure X general fund sales tax dollars to do that or not. So it's going to be interesting, I think, in this case. The County of Yuba has filed an appeal. That means that, you know, they will go up to the next level of the court to determine whether, in fact, this is a special tax. But it's a cautionary tale, in fact, because for like the City of San Ana, the $60 million, maybe it's more or less, I don't know, I look at finance staff for that, is an important part of our revenue picture. And so I just was asked to come today and talk to you a little bit about what that means. And I'm happy, I really want to spend most of my time listening to you and answering any questions that you guys might have.
Let me make a comment and then ask a question. I think what you just laid out to us has been our concern, I think, from day one. And finance staff have been really helpful with us about telling us, you know, kind of where the first batch of almost $60 million has gone, to fix the structural deficit, which you and I can argue that that was a general fund, used all the money to fix structural deficit, but the rest of it went to public safety. And recently, there was another public safety contract approved. So if I am the court in that case, I say, wow, San Ana's used a chunk of their money for general fund purposes to fix the structural deficit, but then the rest of it went to public safety. So our concern has been, well, it does say 911, it does say retain officers, but then it says enhance parks, fix roads, and some other stuff, or essential services, or whatever the language says. And so that's been our concern from day one, is that the money be spread out. And I know Catherine tried in the first meeting to kind of link things so we could figure out where the money was going, but that's, I think, been our general concern in our questions from day one. And so my question to you is, is that if that's a cautionary tale to us, and we're just making recommendations, we've already, unfortunately, some of us, or all of us, have been in the newspaper already about our concerns about the sales tax. So the question is, is that do the council hear it? We can't continue to fund, per the lawsuit, police and fire and public safety and not spread the money out so that every department gets its fair share, a percentage of its fair share, going even to E-Tech 1.6 to fix the mediums. So I think that that, from our perspective, is how can we best express that in our oversight report to the city council to make it crystal clear that we, as the Citizens Oversight Committee, would like the money spread out and not just put in one bucket, and therefore jeopardizing the tax, and as Tim said, the lottery that the city council won last election cycle?
So first of all, I'd like to address, you know, this issue about, you know, accounting for the money, because I do think that one of the big differences between Yuba County and what San Ana has done is that in Yuba County, they were actually taking the revenue and putting it into its own fund. And I think that was, in my opinion, probably the biggest problem for them. In their measure, it said that the revenues are to be accounted for and paid into a public safety services and essential services trust fund entirely, to fund certain services. And I know the reason that's important is that we didn't do that here. We took all of our money and just dumped it right into the general fund. And I know that that's caused some concern for members of the committee, as well as members of the public, saying, wait a second, we didn't get to account for every single penny and dollar because you didn't go put it in its own fund. You know, I'd have to say that after seeing this case, I actually think it's a good idea that you didn't do that based on this because of that. But more importantly, I think, to understand how to spend your special, your money under this general tax, under your sales tax, is to understand how the budget is created. And I think one of the challenges that was faced in putting this together was the timing, timing issues and how a budget is put together. So I think your concerns are best addressed, in my opinion, in doing this work for over 20 years, your concerns are best addressed in the budget process. Because during the budget process, that is the time when, regardless of where current general fund dollars are allocated to, it's your opportunity to say where you think general fund dollars can be allocated to. Now, there are going to be certain things that you can't make any, you're going to say, well, there's not a lot of choices we can make if we've already paid raises and we've already done X, Y, and Z. That may be true to some extent, but, and I would leave this to your finance staff, but there are always, in every budget cycle, some discretionary decisions to be made and to set priorities and how you're going to use your dollars. So when you're saying, how can you do it? I'd say, press your finance staff and your management staff to say, what does that budget process look like, and how can we get involved in it sooner?
Let's go from my right on down. For any further questions?
I'm okay right now. I don't have any questions.
Mr. Lugo?
No comments, thank you.
Ms. Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Madam City Attorney, I would ask the following question, just based on what Committee Member Leo stated to, and maybe this is more to finance and maybe how this is documented, what percentage of Measure X is going directly to law enforcement, police and fire, whether it is towards, because we were trying to fill the structural deficit? What percentage of that structural deficit are dollars going towards law enforcement? And that's public safety, police, and fire? And the additional, you know, discretionary funds that we had that were left over beyond the deficit? What amount of that is going towards public safety? And then what's the delta that's left that is discretionary that we possibly could create or recommend to the city council during the budget process of how we can allocate those funds to the other purposes that were alluded in the statement, that said it was going to go to homelessness, said it was going to go to parks, on and so forth? So that, you know, because when we say that there's no way to, you know, track this, you know, the general fund has various different accounts, service accounts, whatever you want to call them, where we put money. And so just because you set up a fund, it's still going to the general fund, but it's going to specific purposes, doesn't mean that it's a special tax. And so I think I want to make that very clear. The other thing that I want to talk about is liabilities. Based on the Yuba County, and I think it's important for us to understand this, is that just say 80%, and this is just hypothetical, just say 80% of the revenues that we've received thus far of Measure X is going to law enforcement. Based on the Yuba County, to me, that seems like it's a special tax. It's, to me, it just seems like a Ponzi scheme that we so-called said this was going to be a general tax, but the majority of the revenue, and even though we didn't set up a specific fund, 80% of that is still going towards public safety. That's a problem. There's potential liability. This Oversight Committee has already indicated its concerns about that, has asked for a matrix to keep track of how these monies are being spent so that we don't find ourselves in this predicament like Yuba County. I think that's important, whether we had a special set account or not. It's really what we're spending and where that money is going to, and if it's a threshold that the court or someone can say, hey, San Ana is pulling a fast one here, 80% of that money is going to law enforcement, that, to me, seems like a special tax. So I just want us, this is hypothetical, I'm not saying this is what we're doing or not doing, but it's a concern, and I would just like to ask you, City Attorney, do you believe, based on this hypothetical, if it were true, would this tax be in jeopardy?
So, you know, my opinion at this point is that we have a general tax, that it was properly adopted as a general tax. And I think the conversation, you know, as alluded to in the first question, is an important one. It actually leads to this argument that's still a general tax, because it isn't like you picked this up and put it in that fund and said, I'm going to use it all for police services. Even prior to the adoption of this tax, a good chunk of your general fund, 100%, is allocated to public safety. Right? And so I think that, you know, as your, as any new general tax money comes in, to the extent that your new general tax is allocated on that same basis, I don't think that alone is going to be the argument for a special tax. Now, I think if this committee insisted on, and then the city council, taking the committee's recommendation, created a new fund, and we put it aside and said, this is the Measure X fund, and we're going to then allocate money only from the Measure X fund, and then 80% of it ended up going to a specific purpose, that's where I think you'd have a problem. And that's what I came to really discuss with you, is that to the extent that the general fund tax continues to go into the general fund, and then to be taken out of the general fund, and if it's taken out, really on the same kind of a basis as your general fund money is being spent, I think that actually tells the right story, which is that that's just, that's where a lot of your general fund revenue is going to support those services.
Mr. Carpenter, do you have any questions?
I appreciate you. Well, I think so long as the City of San Ana continues to go along the course that it has, which is to treat this money as general fund money, to put the money into the general fund, and to have the kind of policy discussions you're having both at this committee and the city council meeting, I don't think this case will have any impacts on the City of San Ana at all. You know, you're...
I'm sorry, would the city have to litigate it, or no? Or would that be something that...
No, 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 you wouldn't. As long as you stay this course, I think you're fine. Your tax has not been challenged, it was adopted in the right way, you don't have a special fund, and I think that it's, you know, it's sound and solidly legal, and it's based on a number of factors. Like I said, it's based on the definition, it's based on the fact that you put it in the general fund, and it's based on what the voters intended.
I appreciate that, but all it would take is for a citizen to file a litigation, is that, how would the city be brought to court, brought to task under this? Is it by a citizen's action, or what?
Well, citizens certainly have the right to take that action if they feel, if they felt that this constituted a special tax. In my opinion, I don't think they'd be successful in making that case.
Okay, so the likelihood of litigation is relatively small, is that your assessment?
Yes. Well, the likelihood of filing litigation, I can never predict that because I don't know people. The likely of something being filed and having them prevail, I think the likelihood of prevailing is very low.
Okay, thank you.
And I have a few questions for you. First, I think it's important for this committee to understand, hopefully I have this correct, but it's not up to this committee to determine whether this is a special tax or a general tax. And further, it's probably not, it's not even our, to really speak into that, or, because this committee is, was formed by the voters to carry out specific tasks. I'm familiar with the Yuba case, and I agree that we are differentiated from that. And I think that, you know, the wording of it is much better. I would say that the thing that does worry me is the intent of the voters portion, because I don't want to speak for the rest of my committee members, but everyone that I have spoken to had the impression that it was going after the listed type items in the ballot language. And when we mentioned that, oh, well, what about this other general fund language in there, it's like, oh, that was the sneak in, you know? And so that's the part that worries me when I look at the Yuba case versus our language. So I don't know if, you know, who defines, I guess my question to you would be, who defines what the intent of the voter is? Because, again, if I'm defining it, I think we lose on that case.
Well, it's interesting, because at least the trial court in this particular case said, they said, A, we're going to look at the intent of the voters, and then they said, to determine what the voters intended, we are going to look to the ordinary and common meaning of the words used in the measure. And then they go on to actually say, you know, they went to analyze each word in the ballot question itself, and they kept looking at, oh, the ordinary conversation was public safety, public safety, public safety. I think in your case, there may have been a specific intent, but when I look at the San Ana measure, it was public safety and homelessness and potholes. The other thing that the court in Yuba looked to in terms of trying to decide whether this was special or not, they actually went to what they call the legal analysis, the county council's analysis, or the city attorney's analysis. And I had one of those moments when I first saw this case, right? Like, oh, gosh, they went and looked at it. In the case of Yuba County, the county council analysis actually specifically said, the analysis provides that the revenue generated from the tax is intended to be spent on public safety, followed by a list of public safety type services. So, you know, of course, I went back to go, oh, my gosh, I can't remember, you know, what my analysis said. But I was really happy when I saw it, because not only did we say include, and I kind of parroted the language, but not in your question, but added, was the revenue from the transactions and use tax would also be used to address the city's structural deficit. Which is meaning that to have a structural deficit was for things that you already spent money on, or that you had already committed yourself to. Or that you had already committed yourself to? And there were a variety of uses across? So that's how the court looks. They said they're going to look at the plain language? And they're going to look at what was put in the language, you know, the arguments and the analysis?
And I, I think I agree, agree with your legal analysis on that? I would say that the, again, the common voter? And this is a differentiator between the common, common language versus legal language? The common voter, I think if you were to poll them, and I'm not saying that you should? From your standpoint? But the common voter really looked at the, you know, the first part of the language? And again, as you stated in your, in your, your first statement? You know, people were, you had people look at the wording and language to make sure it would pass? And it was favorable? And obviously that's the, you know, you know, that's what you're hoping to have happen to be able to? If you wanted this to pass? The, the thing that does worry me a little bit? Well, there's two, two, two things that worry me. You, you indicated that, you know, our opportunity is to speak into the budget? Well, the first year of any tax is the most important? And unfortunately, this, this committee did not have an opportunity? To speak into the most important part of this process? Which was the first budget? And I understand, I'm, I'm, I was the last one appointed to this committee? But all of us were appointed after, or never, we didn't have an opportunity to be able to speak into the, as a committee? Obviously, all of us could speak into, into it as an individual? But not as a committee? And I think that's a shame. And I, and I think it's, it's a, a true disadvantage to the voters? That when they look at the, the, what the intent of, you know, from November to March? What, you know, what, actually, it was even later than March, I think? That everyone was appointed? It's a, it's a true shame that did not follow the intent of, of the, of the ballot language? With, with regards to this specific committee? Because every year beyond now is going to be up and down from, from, from the, the budget that is right now? So we took away the most important year of this committee? And gave that solely to the, the power of the council? Which again, I think is unfortunate? And then my, there will be a question on this one for you? And as you, as you indicated, oh, actually, back up? You, you, the, the Yuba case was, I believe, decided two days before our last meeting? If I recall correctly from, might have been three? But, you know, days before? And, you know, one of the things that I wanted to bring up last time was our audit committee? Or audit requirements? And fortunately, I think Ms. Downs, you know, kind of satisfied those requirements? But this is the scary part to me is that? And, and I think you, you even said this, Ms. Carvalho? Was that it's, it's going to be really, really hard to track this stuff? Yet it's in the ballot language? Or not the ballot language, I think in the, you know, explanations to it? To, that was, that, it is supposed to be tracked? And again, the first year is the easiest of these years? We still have twenty years? You know, in year twenty? We're, the city is, is to be saying what, what this Measure X money is spent on? From, from the, from the city staff perspective, they're supposed to report on that? And there's supposed to be an audit of that? And I think that that was an integral part of people, of folks that they voted for it? Of voting yes on it? Of saying that there's going to be oversight to this? And so I, I would ask you, my question, I guess, would be? How are, how, from your legal perspective? How, how, how are you going to, how do we expect to be able to bifurcate this? When I just heard you say that you really can't, it's all general fund?
Well, and I think, I think the difference is? What I look to is maybe other entities that have had similar language in their measures? So, you know, this just kind of comes to mind? When I look at OCTA and the sale, and the tax measures that they have? They also have an Oversight Committee kind of looks? And I think part of that oversight is, and I, and I said it in my legal analysis for the measure? Was you have a right to have staff? It says an annual expenditure, I wrote down an annual expenditure disclosure by the city to the public? Right? Now, that is required, that's in the language, that has the disclosure? Now, whether, how that disclosure, it isn't going to say, well, every one of these pennies went to A, B, and C? But it, but I think there could be a conversation that says? We increased these services this year? We increased these general fund services this year? Or we funded a particular project this year? That we wouldn't have otherwise funded if we hadn't had the money? And I think that would satisfy the disclosure requirement by the city. In terms of the audit? I never, you know, I'm not an auditor and I'm not in the finance department? And so I really defer my, to my colleagues on that? But I read that as the annual audit by an independent certified public accountant? Would be the annual audit that we do? Only that certified public accountant would say, okay, we got more sales tax measures? They would just be, be making sure that the money was spent on general fund services? But I could be wrong because I don't, I don't know, because I don't know how that works? I think it would be so that they weren't, so that general fund money, for example? Wasn't scooped up and put into a special fund? You know, wasn't moved to the water fund to pay for a new pump station? Maybe there was an emergency that they, that's what I looked at the, that's how I read the audit by the independent certified accountant? That it's not moved out of the general fund into a special fund? Or you had another requirement that it stay here? You know, pay for Santa Ana services? That we didn't pick up a big chunk and give it to another public agency? That's how I read it, but I, again, I would defer.
Well, that, that, that response worries me? Because as a finance person, as a CPA? I mean, I read that language plain as day? And unfortunately, I think that that is, you know, it is poor wording? And unfortunately, I think it is, it, it was a highlighted type thing of, hey, there's going to be oversight to this? And not just, oh, it's going to go into the general fund? And, oh, by the way, we, just like every other city in California, will have an audit? Like we did for the past, well, not a hundred and fifty years? Because I don't think there's an audit requirement back then? But for, for the past number of years, that it's been a requirement for cities in California? To have audited financial statements? And so, yeah, I, I think that that, I, I understand your response? But I, I hope that that is, you know, especially when I hear audit? And I, and I'm hearing you say that there's, that, or the expenditure language can be? The expenditure report can be essentially a narrative for? Hey, we, we did these four things? Without providing the detail of what the actual expenditures were? That's not expenditure report? It's, and especially, again, I look out eighteen years from now? And being able to say, well, what did we use Measure X funds for? I mean, we can kind of do that, it's a hard job today? It's going to be very, very difficult to do? You know? Ten years from now, when we're at that last year of our, of, of one point five percent? It's going to be even more difficult than in the tenth year to do it in the eleventh year? When it drops down to one, one percent? And even more difficult because of the amount of time that's passed in year twenty? And those types of details, I think, is what, you know, it frustrates me with the ballot language to where? You know, I wish we would have just been more upfront? But again, that's not up to this committee to be able to, you know, to make those determinations? If someone else wants to make those determinations? And present that to someone in a black robe, they can do that? But not for us.
Chairman Johnson, very quickly?
Yes, absolutely.
In regards to the audit, are we talking about the CAFR? It was that the understanding of what that audit would be? That it would just be part of the CAFR?
I'm not sure what the understanding was? But there is language in there about a separate audit report?
Okay.
The, and, and so that's what we've been working with our auditors on? Is making sure that we can deliver them something where they can apply procedures to that thing? And issue a separate audit report?
Thank you for that clarification? Because I just want to make sure, because a CAFR is always in the rears? Right? And so when we're dealing with this tax? We, again, we're already finding ourselves in a different situation? Not being able to have a tracking mechanism at this time? And then hoping with this new audit with, and, and setting some procedures and protocols? Will hopefully get us to figuring out a mechanism to, to, to track as much as we possibly can? So I just wanted to be very clear that a CAFR is in the rear is very difficult for us? If we want to provide to the voters? How this money is being spent? Again, we didn't have the opportunity to opine during the budget process? So we missed that opportunity? You know, will this, the monies that have come in since April? Will this be in the CAFR in December? I guess that's the question? And/or we moving towards doing a different audit? Right? So that we have our own track mechanism, tracking mechanism for Measure X? Is the next question that I would ask?
And if I might? The, you know, what Sonia was talking about? The city attorney was talking about with the, you know? It's kind of easier to look at it from the viewpoint of? Okay, this, this money was approved? And so how did we increase our spending as a result of this money? And that's really what your draft? The draft annual report that we've included in your agenda packet is all about? You know, we were at spending at this level? Now we have this new revenue? And so what did we add to the budget this year? That takes us up to the higher spending level? And so that's what we tried to identify? And, you know, that's the best we could do? Because again, it is just mingled into general fund money? So for the auditor's standpoint? For them to apply a separate procedure to it and issue a separate report? They're basically going to look at what we state? So this year's audit for eighteen nineteen, for the April through June? Is going to look very different than the audit for nineteen twenty? Because for April through June? As I tried to express in the draft report before you? Is that it, it did go to the budget deficit? And so the auditor is going to be testing things like? Was the budget adopted with, with an, and use of ten point two million of reserves? Yes, they can point straight to that, that budget adoption? Was the budget adopted with an assumption? That there would be one point five million dollars of cost savings? That, that weren't ever implemented? Yes, they can point to that? So we're trying to lead them to where they can apply, you know, very specific procedures? And say, does it pass the test, yes or no? So that we can express an opinion on it? That this appears to be fairly stated? Now, the nineteen twenty audit, when we get around to that one? You know, because we've been able to, to provide a list of? This is how we increase the budget now that we have this new money? When we provide that list to them? Their audit procedures are going to kind of look like? Okay, they said that they were going to spend, you know, eight point four million on this? Did they spend eight point four million on that? And they're going to apply procedures to that? Because our, our annual report at that time will have the actuals layered in? And so that's, that's kind of how we're trying to, to satisfy? And yet still make sure that this is very clearly general fund money?
I, I'm sorry, can you clarify on the, so on the eight point, on your example of the eight point four million? Are you saying that the auditors are going to essentially look at the, your budget? And did they spend the money in the budget?
They're going to look at our actuals? And say, did we spend the eight point four million on what we said we were going to spend it for? So we'll have a table, for example? That says, if we look at that? I mean, we're not, we're not on the draft report? But in, in the table, I have a line item that says that? That, actually, it's eight point, yeah? Okay. Eight point six million on employee pension contribution, the increase to that? So they're going to say, okay? You said that you're, you know, you're basically expressing to the public? That you're going to spend eight point six million of that on employee pension increase? What was your actual employee pension increase year to year? What did you actually spend it on? And so, you know, maybe they'll look at the increase from year to year? And, and say that, oh, you only spent eight point two million on the increase? You see what I'm saying?
We're identifying, the, the, the objective would be, is this? Where, where did the, they're auditing Measure X? Revenues, no, 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 no problem?
Right.
Okay, so it's all about the expenditure side? And I'm hearing you say, did, did we spend the money on what we budgeted it for? And there's nowhere, I mean, this committee didn't meet beforehand? I don't think you had presented when you put before the, the, the city council? This eight point five eight eight million was because of Measure X? I mean, it was just part of, it was folded into the budget?
You're right.
As, as opposed to identifying that, hey, where did the sixty million go? And so to me, you're, you're, if, if that's the, if that's the procedure? As a CPA, it's like, okay, well, that's, I mean, of course you're going to pass? Because, I mean, that's a, that's a test that you already know the answer to? As opposed to where did this money, where did Measure X money go to? And that's what was implied in the, in the ballot language? At least that's how, you know, my finance mind reads it? And people that I speak to that are not finance minded? I think they understand it to be, well, there was going to be, you're, you're on the Oversight Committee? And it's going, you're going to tell us where this money went? Right? And, and now I'm hearing you say, well, no, it's just, you know? Did we spend money that we budgeted for? And by the way, we didn't even budget, we didn't even explain that this was Measure X money when we budgeted?
So, so I went back because I actually wanted to look at, you know, you had the ballot question? And then the thing that most people don't look at? Is the actual ordinance that went along with it? And that's really where the details are? And so I just have two comments about that? You're not the only city that decided to have an Oversight Committee? I think they're very common when people propose general taxes or special taxes even? You see them all the time? And I think one of the, one of the things you could do is look at how? Because I think a court would do this? Look at how other cities or public agencies? How do their Oversight Committees function? And what kind of, because others have audit requirements too? And how, what do they look like? So I think that's just one place for us to kind of gather some information? To make sure that we're on track? But I think the very fact that you're asking all of these questions? And the how, and the who, and the why? I think is exactly what you were supposed to do? So there was supposed to be a committee that asked these tough questions? There was supposed to be a committee that says? We didn't like the fact that we got started late? And that's part of the Oversight Responsibility, right? We got started late? Gosh, we wish we hadn't gotten started late? Because that's part of being responsible? And I think your input, because you're an advisory committee? You know, you're, that, you're here to ask the tough questions to answer to the public? It's a little different than a normal city council-appointed committee? Who is here to make recommendations on issues? You're here to really be the voice of the public? And just, and, and when you speak out here at this meeting? Or when you speak out in other sources? Whether it be media or whatever? You're doing exactly what I think was the intent? Whether, whether staff likes it or not? Or whether council likes it or not? That's exactly your intent? And so, you know, I know we can't go backwards? And I can't comment on how the committee was formed? That's not my role? My role here is to, is I provide the legal advice? But I think that as you move forward? Good government would say that the committee should develop a plan? In terms of what you'd like to see as you move forward? So that, so that you are in a position of at least making those recommendations? Because that's really your intent? You, you have spoken loudly and clearly about your frustration with the process? I think everyone's heard that? You've spoken loudly and clearly about your frustration not to be able to touch every single penny? As to where it is? And I think that those things are important? And so, you know, my recommendation would be? Particularly with your background? Because you, you know probably much more than the average, you know, citizen knows? Is going forward? How could you feel more comfortable to be able to tell your public? We did what you wanted us to do? We, given the set of circumstances that we had? It wasn't perfect? But in this next, in this next cycle? This is how we made sure that the money was being put to good use? I, I think that's the charge.
And I think you were, you were going down the road of explaining that? I, I think you had looked at the, the actual ordinance and the audit? Was there something that, that I had said that was opposite of your reading of the ordinance?
No, no, I'm just saying that I actually looked at it. It said, it's an annual audit of the revenue generated? So that, that's the plain meaning? So an auditor would come in and say? Okay, we're going to audit the revenue generated? And they're going to look at the sales tax reports, right? And that's, because it is what it is?
What's it, what's it say about the expenditures?
And then I was going on to that? Then it says, an annual audit of the revenues generated by the sales tax? And expenditures made will be conducted by an independent certified public accountant?
So it's not, it's not just including the revenue? It's also including the expenditures?
Yes.
And that's, again, there's, I don't think there's any, any issue? Every single per, every single person on staff that are, the DL Evans? Is that, who, who? They're going to be very qualified on the revenue side? It's the expenditure side that I think is my concern? And probably, and, and I think maybe from, from most, most folks is that? You know, the revenue is going to come in? You know, we're not going to go down to the ice cream shop at the corner and make sure they're collecting sales tax? But, you know, we want to make, there, there is a requirement on the expenditure side? And that's a, it's a, it's a, an audit requirement? It's not, to me, that is not a, oh, this is where we budgeted it? And this is where we're going? This is where we spend it? That's not showing where- we're going, this is where we spent it, that's not showing where Measure X funds went. And I think this is, this actually is your, you know, from a legal standpoint, this is the problem on the legal side with the Yuba, uh, uh, case, is that, um, if we don't do this, I think you have a problem.
Well, see, I, I know.
Let's use a real life example, because I think it brings home, I think, Vice Chairman Johnson's question, and Commissioner Martinez's question. If you look at page 27 of 28, right? I don't know if you have that, Sonia.
I have, I'll put it for you.
Okay, if you look at, and you know, I'm not going to, I'm not here to judge whether or not it's a special tax or general tax, but let's take the folks who are going to present next, okay? The voter, the intent of the voters was to say, I don't know what it says, does it say fix potholes, fix roads, I don't know what it says.
Fixing streets.
Fixing streets. We knew from our first meeting that there's no general fund money for fixing roads. Now, if you were to ask every resident of Santa Ana, they'd say, please spend as much money as you can on fixing roads, just because we're the pass through for the county. I look at what the council did, the first batch of 19 million dollars of Measure X revenue, did not put a single dime into fixing streets. Now, does that give us exposure? Sure does. Because we did not, because we told the voters we were going to fix roads, and we didn't spend a dime on it. And we don't even have it in the general fund currently. So I think that goes to his, his question is, if we're going to do expenditures, this is where the council made a massive mistake, there's a massive hole in your argument. If you went to court, and the judge said, oh, well, what about, it says here they're going to fix roads, oh, you spent no money on roads, but 75% went to public safety. Hmm. That looks to me like, hmm, looks, it's acting and walking like a special tax, and it's not acting and walking like a general fund tax. So I think that that goes to, I think, all of our concerns, as not only citizens, but as people on the committee, it's like, we, that's why we started asking for baseline, and if you, I know you're, I don't know if you tracked what we did, we've been asking baselines and improvements to the baselines, just so we can basically, in our process, say, they said this, the police said if we get X amount of dollars, we're going to increase response times by Y. So that money was going to the buckets, so that when you had to do your audit, you could say, oh, yeah, no, we spent X. And I think that's where our, I don't know, I wouldn't call it frustration, it's our concern, because now all of a sudden, I look at this chart, and it's pretty simple, we have exposure because the city council voted to approve funds, and none of it went to fixing roads under, with the use of the general fund Measure X revenue. So therefore, that piece of the initiative is not satisfied. Am I, am I, am I off base?
Yeah, no, and I would say that's exactly the, that's, that's, no, you're right, you're right on base, in my opinion, I think that's exactly the side of the, the role of the oversight committee, right? It's exactly your role, is to carry out these duties to make sure that this measure, as voted by the voters, is doing what it was supposed to do. And if, if, you know, if I'm taking notes, I'm saying, okay, you know what, in the next budget cycle, I need to make sure, although all of our street pavement is done out of a special fund, although it's done this way, I need to make sure, because the measure doesn't say how much, it just says that we're going to use this money to do X, Y, and Z, and I think that's where the committee's recommendations come in. So, so recommendation number one is, during the budget cycle, you know, please, can we put some dollars into some type of street project? Now, whether that funds a consultant to go look at, you know, improvements that need to be made, whether that funds a particular alley project, but, but I think that's exactly your role as a oversight committee. Yes, I agree with you.
I, I, I agree, agree with Mr. Leo, although, um, from ironically, I think that this is actually your argument, that this is not a special tax, is because you didn't, there was actually zero allocated to this item, to where if it was a special tax, there would have to be an allocation to this item. So even though it doesn't feel right, it actually, from my reading of kind of the Yuba thing, the Yuba case versus ours, it actually helps the city, and I'm not, I'm not saying it's right, because I want, I think that there should be money allocated to streets, and just like I don't, my, my 13-year-old son doesn't need a consultant to tell him that he needs to clean his room, the city doesn't need a consultant to tell us that we need to fix our streets. We all drive our streets every single day.
Yeah, you do, but I mean, you do, consultants do have, help you, and I think it's part of your next presentation from staff, which is how you prioritize, and you know.
So let me ask you a question, so it lays out the five different things, buckets, but it acts, 75, 80% go to public safety. It's acting like a special tax, right? And, and, and so therefore, even though we did the great legalese, and your language was passed, and it looks like a general tax, in the end, we're spending it like a special tax, we're going to get dinged for it.
Well, I, I would say so, but here's where, here's where I, I don't, I, yes.
Yeah, we don't know the answer to it.
No, but here's the thing, you were already, if you took, um, 100 million dollars of the city's dollars, and you look at the 100 million coming from the general fund, where is your 100 million dollars going? How much of the 100 million is going to public safety?
Eighty, ninety percent.
Eighty or ninety percent. So if you added another 50 million dollars to your 100, and out of the 50 million dollars, 80% is still going to public safety, it actually tells the story that you didn't just scoop up all the money and use it only on that, it just tells the story that in your budget, 70, 80% of your budget's going where? To public safety. So, yes, well, well, one could say, well, look, 80% of it, look how much went, my argument would be, well, yeah, that makes sense to me. Every new, every, every new dollar that you get in general tax money, based on what you've been doing for the past 15 years, every dollar, 78, 80 cents on that dollar, is going to public safety. And by the way, that's not atypical of what we see happening throughout the state of California today, um, for so many reasons that we can't get into.
This was Keith Carpenter, I have a comment question on that. Um, I think everybody fully appreciates that the allocations were what they were on the general budget before the Measure X. But the problem I see is, the committee was supposed to be formed in advance of this budget process, which did not happen, which again, uh, to the point of the other, of the committee members, was kind of deceptive on the part of, of the, uh, the, the city council, as it would be. So we get the chance to say, hey, look, we don't think 80% should go to public safety. So to tell me that, oh, that's the way it is, that that's how the allocations are, it is really kind of, it's really kind of an insult, because we didn't have any input on that. And to me, that, that, in itself, if I was an attorney, would go, well, geez, guys, you didn't even have any of your committee in place before you did these allocations, so yeah, this really does look like a special tax to me. Because again, we had no input on this at all, all we get to do now is try and figure out where the money went, and, and, but the allocations are the same, so what is the citizen 's input on the budget? It's zero. So again, to me, if I'm an attorney, I would go, this here looks like a special tax to me, folks.
So all I can tell you is the language of the ordinance says, "The city council shall, by resolution, establish a, establish a citizen oversight committee." Doesn't say when, they could have done it in three years, I mean, I'm just, I'm, I'm reading you the language of the actual ordinance. City council shall by resolution.
I totally appreciate that, but the point keying is, there's the intent of the law and the spirit of the law. Granted, you guys messed with the intent of the law, right, and you formed the committee, but was that the spirit of the, of the ordinance? I don't think so.
I was going to go on to the next.
That is what the real issue is, it's not all this other stuff.
Member Carpenter, member Carpenter, we, we want to let, uh, the city attorney, um, continue to answer, answer your, your question.
Okay, yeah, I kind of have a little trouble here, and so I thought this, but go ahead.
Okay, and then it just says, "To act in an advisory role to the city council in reviewing the annual revenue and expenditures of funds from the tax authorized by the article." So you're, you're in advisory role, you're advising the city council in reviewing the annual revenue, council, we think you underestimated, overestimated, whatever, and expenditures of funds from the tax authorized. And again, what you're saying right now is, you're doing everything you should be doing. My only, I don't advise the committee, but I guess the only advice I would leave you with is this, we can't go back and fix what happened, I think this committee has an incredible opportunity to move forward in terms of looking to the future and sending the message, if you truly believe, look, our voters had this expectation, then I would, you know, you have every right as a committee to, um, adopt a statement, to have your, um, chairperson draft a letter that reflects what the committees, committee wants to see, and I think what I'm hearing tonight is, yeah, it didn't happen as quickly as we wanted it to happen, and maybe we want to see some other types of expenditures, but you're an annual committee, you get to make these annual recommendations, so my advice would be, you, you got this opportunity, we're in November-ish, homecoming, and I don't know, maybe you could talk a little bit about the budget timing, um, this is the time to be talking about these things, and to make sure, I guess I, I would say, don't waste your opportunity as an advisory committee to make sure that your committee is heard, um, because you got several months in this, this process to be heard.
Vice Chair Johnson, may I?
Absolutely, go ahead.
Yeah, um, city attorney, so look, I, I'm pretty simple about this, and what I'm hearing is, your position is, we will be able to mitigate any liability because of the way the structure of the bill was made and written in the question, however, there has to be, and what we're asking you to help us with, and maybe guide, um, the financial side of the city, is how do we stay out of trouble, for lack of better words, you know, and, and stay, you know, away from the liability issues that maybe these other cities and counties maybe are getting themselves into, but at the same time, meet what is the demand of this committee, and what was the expectation of the citizens of the city? The expectations and the demand of the cit, of this committee is simple, we need accountability, we're not asking the city to have a balanced budget, because the intent of this measure was to be able to cover things that were needed per the general fund, however, the general fund, right now, was already off, off of budget, so we're not saying, hey, balance the budget, well, that's not what we're saying. What we're saying is that we need accountability of where these dollars, these Measure X dollars are going, so we'll be able to baseline it and be able to present to the constituents in our city, what we are doing and how we're spending those dollars. So I need, we need your help to be able to structure in a manner that we stay, you know, we cover our liability, but we still have focus in a manner that maybe is a little bit less than what was intended, but more of what is needed.
And I, I think really the purpose of my being here today was this, we here, we know, in a perfect world, we would have taken, when we got our sales tax money in, in a perfect world, we would have, we would have taken that money and said, okay, finance staff, we know, I mean, um, what was the increase? You know, what, what is, what represents that, that additional increase, right? Give me the revenue that represents this sales tax measure. And in a perfect world, we would have opened up a separate account, and we would have put the money in there, and then we would have gone through a budget process, and then we would have had you allocate only from that account where all the money went. I'm saying in a perfect world, as, from your perspective, right? Because that's what, because that's what laypeople would expect, the people, your citizens might have expected that process. What I was here to tell you today is that we can't do that. We cannot take that 60 million dollars, or whatever that revenue is, and put it in that separate account. Because if you do, what you're really doing is opening up yourself to that challenge, that, oh, look, they did, you know, put it aside. So that's one thing, but that doesn't mean, that doesn't mean, just because you can't do that, it doesn't mean that you can't start having a conversation, because you can look at the baseline, you can see what is discretionary. There, don't take the can't for meaning you can't do anything, because there's so many things you can do. And I think working cooperatively with your finance staff, to have that conversation of, what do we expect the general tax revenue to be next year? Is it above what it was this year? Is it more than it was the year before? And that's a great conversation to have. If we predicted the sales tax revenue is going to be 100 million dollars, and it comes in at 105 million dollars, then I think that conversation about that extra 5 million dollars is where you come in as the advisory folks to say, our citizens thought they were getting A, B, C, D, E, F. Can we please make sure in this budget cycle, that increase that we didn't expect, we, we could, we attribute it to the sales tax? City council, we really want to see it spent on A, B, and C. And I think that's where your role is. And that's where I think you have a lot of opportunity, because you know what? You're going to, I mean, I would assume that revenues go up, right? Not always, but if it doesn't, then, you know, also, where do we spend the discretionary money? So, so I think there's a lot of cans in that, of what you can do.
And I, I appreciate that, that response, and I also appreciate you going back to the actual language, um, but I, and I think we would have loved to have this conversation in time to, to abide, abide by the spirit of the February ordinance by the, by the, by the council, to where, we should have had a March meeting, to where we should have, we, we should have been able to speak into that in year one. Now, obviously, we know that no one in this room can go back and change time, uh, but that is an, uh, an area, I think, of frustra, I know it's a frustration of mine, um, and it sounds like it's a, a frustration area for others also. Does anyone, Ms. Martinez?
Just very briefly, and I want to thank the city attorney for being here, um, and your point that we have an opportunity, I'm not looking at the past, I'm not sure what's going to happen in the future, all I know, just currently, now what's happening in the present. And just based on the facts, and the report that's been presented to us, about 54,893 dollars has already been allocated, will be allocated, um, that is recurring. Right, we have one-time funds, and then you have recurring. And so my question is, well, how much money do we have of really, of oversight for us to even have this conversation about the budget process? Because if you look year after year, moving towards 1920, if this is the case, because you have recurring a 16 million for the, um, for the fiscal year 2019 budget, which is spending for Measure X, and then you go to the, Measure X will also pay 40.2 million of unrestricted general revenue purposes in accordance with the ballot measure for the 2019-20 general fund budget, in, in addition to the 13.7 million dollar deficit, and if you add up these columns here, it goes to 38,177 of reoccurring, so when you add up those two, it's 54 million ongoing recurring, and so I guess, the question is, as we move forward, what monies, unless these buckets are shifted and changed, there's really not much that this body can really do. So I think there, we, we need truth telling here, and being honest to ourselves, being honest with the public, that we, that there were decisions that were made that are recurring. And there's also decisions that were made, that there's compa, compounding impacts, whether it's pensions, benefits, on and so forth, that will continue to reoccur year after year, that will take away from the Measure X monies going to fill that deficit and continuing to pay for these raises and pensions, and so I just want us to understand that. I think, you know, we need to meet our obligation in doing, um, the audit, do them as much as we possibly can, um, in being transparent and communicating with the council what's happening and what the facts are before us, and call it a day.
I, I would, I would say that your statement, probably all of us in one shape or fashion have some concerns about the direction. And I think if the language is appropriate to put in the annual report to the city council, then that's what needs to go there. And that, our voice in the annual report can be nice and say the council's doing a great job, or we can say, we don't think the council did the right thing, and certain decisions were made that aren't with the spirit. Now, I don't want the city to get in a situation where what we say puts the general tax at in question, but there are some things that we can say, you know, and as I've said at previous meetings, we function almost like a grand jury, to a certain extent. And if we, representing the voices of the people who voted for the tax, think that the money's not being spent appropriately, then we can say so, in very strong language, very direct language. And you know, all of us up here, when we first got here, and our first meeting was, oh, by the way, the first 60 million is gone? We were in shock, and I understand why, because we didn't really know there was a, a massive structural deficit. Now, we all scoffed at the 2.1 million that they couldn't cut from the budget, because we all think like, oh, it's got to come out somewhere. Just like when we found out that there's no general fund money that goes to our next presenters, which I'm in total shock of, because I did my own homework, I couldn't find a single city that does not spend some money on general, some general fund money on roads. So that tells me that whatever we've been doing in the past was robbing Peter to pay Paul, and now we're at this point where we got to fix our roads as one of the tenants of the initiative. And so I, I would say that Commissioner Martinez and, uh, Vice Chair Johnson, our voice will be whatever language we choose to use in the report, and it could be, unfortunately, not so And it could be, unfortunately, not so flowery.
So, I mean, unless anyone else has any questions, on behalf of the committee, I would, you know, express our gratitude for coming here and explaining, explaining that and fielding our questions the best you can. And so I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you again for having me. And I know it took much longer than staff had anticipated, but it certainly felt like you needed to, to, you know, share your feelings. And I'm always available through your staff to this committee to answer any questions, so you can always refer them to staff, to your staff, and staff will let me know what you need.
And I appreciate the segue, Member Leo, to our next, next agenda item.
I'll do it myself.
Okay. So, let's, go ahead. You're good to go.
Great. Well, good evening, Chair on the teleconference and members of the Measure X Committee. My name's William Galvez. I'm the city engineer. And I wanted to provide you with an overview of Pavement Management 101. I think that Committee Member Martinez stepping out, I don't think that she would miss a beat. She's heard this presentation before, years ago. So, anyway, so, but hopefully, this information is enlightening. And I'm going to be waiting for the, for the screen to come on.
Do you want me to do this?
Oh, I'll do it. I can do it. Thank you.
It might be asleep.
Oh, there it goes. Okay. So, first off, just for some terminology here, what is pavement management? And basically, it's an accurate inventory of our pavement conditions citywide. It's actually a computer system that maintains that inventory. It helps us predict future pavement conditions, although you'll be happy to find that we do field measurements of actual field conditions every two years. So the predictive qualities of the pavement management don't have to go that far out. But nonetheless, it does help us with prioritizing what streets that we would be maintaining and paving. So it helps us develop maintenance programs. It helps us prioritize and recommend cost-effective road repairs. It maximizes the return of available funding, and that's really a key here, and I'll get into that a little bit later. It helps us meet OCTA funding eligibility. More than that, it helps us maintain federal highway administration access to funding and state funding. Those funding sources, federal and state government funding, requires us to have a pavement management system, so this accomplishes that. Every street is field assessed every two years. And right now, the streets are being assessed as we speak. Hopefully, the information will be available to the public in the spring, once the assessments are completed. Now, just to get an idea as to what our network looks like, 42% of our streets, in terms of surface, roadway surface, is arterial. An arterial street is a main or primary street, such as 17th Street, First Street, Bristol. Those are arterial streets. 47% of our streets are local residential streets. And another 4% are also residential streets, but those are the concrete-type streets. And then 7% are industrial streets. In terms of centerline, though, centerline miles, 104 centerline miles are arterial. But because arterial streets have three lanes in each direction, that's why, compared to residential streets, which is more than double, 265 centerline miles of asphalt streets are residential. Nonetheless, because arterials have three lanes in each direction, that's why they make up 42% of the entire network. What does this mean? Well, what it means is that if you were to drive every lane in the city, you would have to drive 1,130 miles, so that you can drive every lane in the city. So that's what it means. It means that we have about 91 million square feet of roadway to maintain in the city. That's about a little over 2,000 acres. But again, I think the easiest way to think of it is, you're going to have to drive 1,130 lane miles to drive every lane in the street. Something that's really important in terms of pavement management is understanding how the streets age. And so I've done these types of reports and studies for three other cities that I've been a city engineer and public works director. Coming to this city, though, because this city is larger than the prior cities that I've worked for, what we wanted to do, though, is we wanted to engage a consultant that's an expert in this kind of maintenance, to give us a check, to see if what we're doing is correct. And so we commissioned a study in 2017 by AECOM. And so they looked at our street network, and they looked at specifically, what is it, what it would take to maintain our 91,000, excuse me, 91 million square feet of roadway. And so what it comes down to is that if we did an effective and efficient maintenance, which is to do preventive maintenance, to do an overlay, and I'll explain what all that means, then we would have to spend at least $20 million per year on our street network. If we don't do, if we don't maintain our streets as efficiently, we end up maybe saving some money on the front end, but we will overpay on the back end. It's just the same as, you know, driving your car. If you, if you maintain your car, you'll probably get a lot of mileage out of it. If you don't maintain your car, you might end up having to buy a new car every few years. And so it's the same thing here. So this is going to be maybe, probably, one of the more challenging slides to describe. But this is what a street goes through when it ages. The vertical axis is something called a PCI, Pavement Condition Index. It's an industry standard index, so our PCI in Santa Ana will be the same as a PCI in Tustin, or Orange, or Anaheim. 100 means that a street is in really theoretical perfect condition, and it'll age down to a zero. So that's the vertical axis. On the horizontal axis, that's time. And so what happens here is that when a street first starts out at 100, which is at year zero, it will age over the first five, 10, or 15 years. And the, those first few years, or those first 15 years, it's in a condition that you can apply a slurry seal to. And when you do that, it's a very cost-effective method to kind of kick the street back up to 100. So what we try to do is, we try to do our due diligence in maintaining streets in this first green area, you might say. It's a very cost-effective method of maintaining streets. However, you can only slurry seal a street so many times. Thereafter, you have to overlay a street. What an overlay means is it's an inch and a half or two-inch layer of asphalt that you apply to a street. By the way, I forgot to mention, a slurry seal, what it is, is a thin, it's like a paint job. A slurry seal basically fills all of the voids and the cracks on a street. And what it does is, it prevents, it prevents from water from seeping into the subgrade and creating potholes. It's, again, it's pretty much like maintaining your house. If you give it a paint job every so often, you're going to be able to preserve the structural integrity. It's a very cost-effective way of maintaining streets. Now, the next item that I was describing to you, which is the blue area, is an overlay. And that's where you apply an inch and a half or two-inch layer of asphalt. And that's typically what you would see, where you see a whole crew laying a layer of asphalt, and then you have rollers behind that crew rolling the asphalt. And so that's an overlay. And so if you maintain a street, you're able to then overlay a street, say, around 20 years later, and it'll be very cost-effective, because it'll only cost you around $3 a square foot to overlay the street. Once you overlay the street, you kick it right back up to 100, and you basically start the process all over again. That's where we get the $20 million per year for our entire street network. Now, if you don't overlay a street, or if you don't perform the regular maintenance that you're supposed to upfront, you end up with a street that's way down in the red area, which is a reconstruction. And that becomes very, very expensive, $10 to $15 a square foot. And unfortunately, we do have some of those streets in town that are in that red area. This is just to show that we do have a pavement management system that's computerized, and we have a map that would show the condition of all of the streets in the city. I don't expect that you look at each one of these maps and figure it out. The information is available online. It's, I can also email it out. The new information that we are going to complete in the spring is actually going to be posted online. So you'll be able to look at every one of these maps, and you'll be able to pick out your street and say, you know what? I think this street is in pretty bad shape. Let me see if they actually have correct information. And you'll be able to then confirm that. And if not, then we've, we've blown it. We've made a mistake. So this information is already available, but we are going to make an enhancement, and we're going to post it online in the spring. I do want to point out, though, that the concrete streets in the city behave a little bit different than asphalt street, and because we do have some concrete streets that are residential, those streets are a PCI of 51. So our concrete streets do need help, because they're the, some of the lower PCIs that we have in town. And then we also have some industrial streets in town. They're also, those are asphalt streets, and they're also doing not so well. They're also at 51, so we need some help there. Fortunately, our arterial streets and our residential streets are a little bit better. They have a PCI of 73 and 81 on average. So they're doing a little bit better. So, how are our streets? How do our streets compare to the region? And right now, in Santa Ana, our average PCI is 76. It's getting to a critical level, because OCTA requires us to maintain a PCI of 75. And if we don't do that, then what we have to do is, we have to provide a greater match percentage to our arterial streets. What that means is that what the OCTA did is, they essentially said, if you can maintain greater than 75, you have maximum flexibility. But if your PCI falls below 75, we want to make sure that our arterial streets, that Measure X is paying for, we want to make sure that those streets are properly maintained. Therefore, you city under 75 are going to have to provide a greater match requirement, so that you spend a little bit more money on the arterial streets. That's what that means. So the, the Orange County average is 79, so we're not doing as well as the rest of Orange County. Just a few years ago, we were a little bit better than Orange County. And, but I'll explain why our PCI is declining. But compared to the rest of the state, the rest of the state is at 65, so we are doing better compared to the state. So now, I wanted to show you, and this is, I know that you're going to be very interested based on the prior presentation, where our revenues are coming from for streets. And so, of course, we rely on gas tax. The SB1 that was voted on a couple of years ago is called, it's called RIMRA. We refer to it as RIMRA. It's just another form of gas tax. So you can see there that we are nearly getting almost $6 million of that. Our Measure M fair share is about $5 million. We usually get about $1 million in CDBG funding, and that CDBG funding can only be applied to qualifying residential streets. And then we usually will get water and sewer enterprise funding, almost around $2 million. What that means is that water and sewer operations, and not only in maintaining their mains and sewer mains, they impact the streets. They cut our streets. They also have very heavy equipment. And so this is basically to account for the damage that those operations cause on our streets. So we get about $2 million of funding from that. And then we also use any grants that we receive, particularly active transportation grants. Whenever there's any paving that we can do or perform as part of that grant, we will do that. And so even though we might get 20 or 30 million dollars' worth of active transportation and other type of street grants, we usually will, can apply about $1 million of that for roadway improvements as part of those grants. And so our entire, and this is a snapshot in time, the best information we have available is that the total revenue for streets is around $21.7 million. However, we do have expenditure commitments. We do have a debt service. And, and I put two asterisks there, I know that it's really small, I put two asterisks there, because currently, we are refinancing that bond. Our current payment is $4.2 million, but because we're taking advantage of a better rate, we might be able to refinance that. I think our finance director might give us the best figure currently, but at the time that we printed this, it was around $3.5 million, that we're going to go down. Our debt service will decrease, and therefore, we'll make more funding available for streets. We do set aside $1.7 million to operate 300 signals that we have citywide. We also set aside about $1.5 million for median landscape maintenance. This is not the type of landscaping that, that one of the public comments that we received. This is basically just general maintenance that we've been performing. However, we're hoping to perform maintenance in a more effective and efficient way, and maybe we can also increase or improve at least the landscaping in our, in our median citywide. We also set aside about $1 million and a half for pothole and custodial maintenance. You know, these streets that are in really bad shape, the ones that need to be reconstructed, we're constantly getting calls to fill potholes on those streets. And so this million and a half is for that. This million and a half is also for some cleanup work that we do in the streets. If we didn't have any streets to reconstruct, we can probably reduce that $1.5 million to, to, you know, very low amount, near zero. But unfortunately, we do have streets that need reconstruction, so that's that amount. And then we also set aside maybe half a million dollars to match other grants that we get, either from state or the federal government. So when you have the 21.7 minus the 8.8 commitment, our funding level for streets is 12.9 million. A little bit of good news is that this coming year, our gas tax amount, it's listed here as 6.76 million. That gas tax might go up a little bit. Staff tries to take a conservative view, or, because if we budget for a higher amount of gas tax, and then gas tax actually comes in lower, then we're not able to then deliver on some of these capital projects. So I know that this coming year, gas tax is going to significantly go up, maybe by a million dollars over what's listed here. But we can't budget for that, because then if the gas tax doesn't come in as predicted, then we're stuck with capital projects that we can't deliver. So what does this mean, long-term? So this graphic is just to show you that if we did have $20 million, like we recommend to maintain our network system, we would be setting aside about $2.5 million every year to slurry seal streets. It's a very important, cost-effective program. Then another $10 million would be set aside to overlay streets. Those are costs that are much higher than a slurry seal, but it's a very, very cost-effective way to maintain our network. And as you can see in these bars, we'd be having to set aside about $7.5 million every year to reconstruct streets. Unfortunately, when you say, we're going to spend $7.5 million, if we had 20, $7.5 million to reconstruct streets, it's not very many streets that we'd be able to reconstruct, because the cost of reconstruction is so high. We're talking about very few streets here, yet we would be spending almost a third of the $20 million on reconstructing streets. So just keep that in mind, that the most cost-effective way of maintaining streets is to slurry seal and to overlay. Slurry seal and overlay. We are not getting our $20 million, and so that's why we would work from the bottom up. We do our slurry seal, and we do our overlay. So over the next seven years, we could program $147 million worth of streets today. So this kind of recaps what I've been talking about. Our recommendation is that we fund the $20 million need that we have every year. If we have a $20 million need, and the available funding stream is 12.9 million, we have a $7.1 million gap. And so that recaps what I've been talking about, but for discussion's sake, some of the gap funding ideas is, you know, general fund. I know that there was a long discussion on Measure X and the general fund. I don't distinguish Measure X. If I can get additional general fund to pave streets, we would gladly do that. But we're also working on some other ideas, because I don't know that the general fund can, can pay for all of that funding gap. So we've been So, we've been looking at pavement impacts, looking at our new solid waste contract. You know, the solid waste contract, those trucks are extremely heavy, and there are, and there's three trucks on every street every week. And so we've calculated what those solid pavement impacts, solid waste pavement impact fees might be. That's not really, that's maybe a topic for a different presentation, but we're looking at possibly having a small amount of the monthly amount that residential and commercial pay into the solid waste. Maybe if we can get a sliver of that to pay for some of the streets, that would be another idea that we could use for paving our streets. We're always looking for grants. Something that other cities list for discussion's sake, this is listed here because we've done this, public-private partnerships or assessment districts. We actually did this before. Two years ago, we did a, a number of industrial streets in the Warner Industrial Center. This is over by Fairview and, oh, I wanna say Sagerstrom? It's just south of Centennial Park. There's a whole number of streets that we partnered with. The city paid half the amount. The property owners self-assessed themselves and paid for the other 50% of the construction costs. And so, we're able to raise $3 million privately, and we matched that up with $3 million that the city paid. And so we, we're actually able to deliver $6 million worth of streets. Those streets were really falling apart. Those streets were full reconstruction. And so, we're not just listing here, this here for discussion's sake. We've done this before. And so, we have a number of other industrial streets, and we can certainly apply that, that process to, to other industrial streets. So, I just wanted to alert, something that I saw that was in your report, that was under discussion right before my presentation here, and that is that we actually did receive additional funding in fiscal year 1819. The general fund received more revenue than expected in fiscal year 1819. Obviously, that was probably because of Measure X. The council used that additional revenue for roadway maintenance, and what happened is the general fund came into the tune of about $2.5 million to close out the year in June of 2019. What that did, though, is, because that was an unexpected expenditure, it freed up some of our gas tax that would have normally have been spent for those streets, and so gas tax was able to get carried over into the current year. And so we are, right now, going to be advertising and bidding out for construction, the list of streets that you see here, and that's from the $2.5 million of gas tax that was carried over to the current year. We're hoping to advertise the, the project in November and to have, to be under construction in the spring of 2020. However, as you know, as I noted, we have a whole, long list of streets that, that need to be reconstructed. And so, I'll show you another graphic. Actually, I have a handout that I'm gonna be passing out, cuz it didn't make it into this presentation. So I'll talk about that last. But basically, what it comes down to is that if we don't find additional money, we're gonna be on that line that's declining. Our PCI will continue to, to decline in, let's see here, I had some notes here. If we continue spending at the 12.9 million dollars that we have identified, we will be at a PCI of 66 in 2024. In order to maintain our PCI of 76, we, we need to find the sources to get that 20 million. If we wanted to raise our PCI to 77, we, we'd have to find $25.7 million every year for the next seven years, and then we can get there. We, we could get there by 2024, but then we'd have to maintain that expenditure level in order to maintain that. If we wanted to raise the PCI to 80 by 2024, we'd have to find almost $30 million per year. So, that's what this shows. It's just basically a recap of, of everything that I've been talking about. One last graphic here. I'll come back to questions, but just one last graphic. I like this graphic, cuz this is what I've been doing here for, for the last seven years that I've been a city engineer. Oops, what happened here? If I could have it my way, we'd start with a street at 100 at the top, the top left, and seven years later, we would slurry it, that's a paint job, at 75 cents a square foot, so that's peanuts. We'd kick that PCI up. The street would age, and at year 15 from new, we'd do another slurry seal. Then it would age to year 20, and this is, of course, all theoretical, but it, it does actually follow our general practice. At 20 years, we would do a thin overlay, that would cost $3 a square foot. And then we'd repeat the process all over again for a 40-year life at a total of $20 million per year for our entire network. But we don't have $20 million, and so that's why certain streets, we're not able to maintain in this fashion, and they dip down. If we don't maintain our streets, we end up overlaying a street at much more expensive $6 a square foot. And if we don't catch the street then, and it goes into a reconstruction mode, then we're paying $10 to $15 a square foot. So, it's the same graphic that I talked about before, but it shows it a little bit different. And then I wanted to pass out this last, it's, it's not on the, on the, on the wall there, but it's really the same information on the streets that we're gonna be paving. Thank you. I'm gonna turn to the second page of this. If we identified more funding... If we're able to identify more funding, the first color are the same four streets that I showed earlier. If additional funding sources are available in fiscal year 1920, we have a whole list of streets that are shovel-ready. We call projects that are shovel-ready are the ones that are already designed and ready to go. All we have to do is advertise and, and have the council help us award, authorize the award, and then we can immediately start construction. So these projects are basically shovel-ready. We would just have to package some specifications, advertise the project, open bids, and award. I don't know how much, how much, in terms of dollars, but I have a feeling that this whole table is about $6 million worth of roadway improvement. So, if we're able to identify more funding from general fund, or if we're able to do a private-public partnership, or if we get more gas tax, we have expenditures on streets ready to go.
I'm sorry, how much in this graph was the dollar on?
This is about, this table here, and I'm, and I'm sorry for the chair that's on the teleconference that can't see this. This is about $6 million worth of streets. And at this point, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to, to try to answer those.
Excellent, I appreciate it. And let's go ahead and open, open the questions from, from my, from, from my right on down. And I wouldn't mind taking this time to recommend to Ms. Downs that we make sure that we put this, this information in with, with the, the online packet, so we have that available in the future.
Yeah, we can certainly add these two slides, yep.
Mr. Leo?
Yeah, I guess, first of all, thank you for the presentation. I think that you probably hear more, you probably hear the most complaints of any department, probably. I had a couple of questions. First of all, I do think that the approach that you used with the private-public partnership, I think that's probably the best way to go in the industrial areas, because we're the only, we're one of the few cities that have industrial property in the, in the county. Or one of the few, few cities in the county that actually has manufacturing as well. So I, so I think that the public-private partnerships make a lot of sense to me. I guess my first question is, we've heard about non-compliance with M2. Where are we in that process? Do you know approximately where we are in working with OCTA to work out whatever the issue is?
I can answer to that.
Okay, okay, hold on. And then, my other question is, is that most, I, I would like to know how we deal with border streets. My example, how do we deal with the traffic around Main Place Mall that's really a combination of Orange and Santa Ana? How do we deal with the flooding on Fairview on the border of Santa Ana-Garden Grove? How do those pocket areas where there's a problem on the border of each city, how do those get funded? Because what happens is, is I believe that both cities are supposed to come together and work that out and figure it out. But what tends to happen is, I think, we end up with the lion's share of the issue, and we have to figure out how to deal with it. Because I know that we're gonna do major development around Main Place Mall, or at least the developer is, and that, that area's gonna be busier. But those streets are public streets. So how do we maintain them so that we get our best return on investment for what happens at the Main Place, but also that Orange fixes their side so that, you know, it's, it reminds me of like what happened when Orange County built the 5 freeway up to the, to the LA County line, and then it went like that? So how do we fix that so that things function, so that not only do we profit, the city of Santa Ana, but how does Orange profit? Or how does Garden Grove profit? Or for instance, as my conversations with Sigurdsson and Sons and their eventual development, how that's gonna fix the end of Santa Ana, but yet it's gonna coast to Mesa? And you know when the Costa Mesa roads end and when the Santa Ana roads start. So how do we deal with those issues? Because to me, those are gateways into the city, but they're also, our residents use those roads on a regular basis. So if you could answer, well, you're gonna deal with the M2, talk to me about how we deal with the borders. I mean, I know we need to fund roads. I think you would not get any disagreement from us that the roads need to be fixed. But how do we deal with the edges of it, so that we can make sure that that functions as well?
Yeah, well, thank you very much for the questions. Great question. I think that communication is a key communication between our staff and Garden Grove staff, or our staff and the City of Orange staff. That's a key. We do partner quite a bit on border streets, on, on a number of infrastructure projects, including overlay projects or storm drain, that, that's gonna be crossing the, the boundary. So we do partner with, with other cities. Sometimes other cities will take the lead. Because of the size of Santa Ana, we oftentimes take the lead role on regional projects. A really good example of regional projects is some of the traffic synchronization projects that go from Garden Grove into Santa Ana into south of us. Typically, Santa Ana will take the lead role. The benefits of taking the lead role is that we control the timing, and we control the, how long it's gonna take to deliver a project, and then we also are in tune with exactly what the status of the, of the project is. So we, we do that quite often. There are some projects in some locations that do fall through the cracks, and, but, but again, the key is communication. So constant communication is a key to ensuring that nothing falls through the cracks. But, but that's a, that's a really good question. There isn't a one way or one procedure to, to ensure that that always occurs, that we always coordinate projects. There isn't any one way. It's just basically just staying in tune with the field conditions and infrastructure conditions.
There, if I'm not mistaken, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, but there is supposed to be a committee between Santa Ana and Orange. And it's, I wanna say it was either done by ordinance or not, cuz this is how old I am. I was on the planning commission for 10 years. And when we did some stuff up there, and Orange did stuff there, there is a group to talk about what we do up there with traffic.
Yes.
And, and if you think about the intense development that we're looking at, and how we deal with traffic, because traffic, that's a busy place. But the rest of it, whatever we can do, I mean, I know from my perspective that advocating for, when you, when you think of quality of life, people think about, not only do they think about parks, but they think that the roads function and the lights function. I know that probably one of your biggest devils is Caltrans and the lights, that when they get, they maintain those off the freeway, right? That's an issue.
That's correct.
So, whatever we can do, but I appreciate you laying out what the costs are, because I think this is what the voters can look to and point to. Oh, look, over the course of the 10-year tax, money was spent accordingly so that roads were fixed over a period of time, and that funding slowly went up to meet the demands of the city. And I think that that's something that we're gonna grapple with on how we make those recommendations to the city council. But I appreciate the presentation.
And just to follow up, it's a technical advisory committee at OCTA that, that meets, and we discuss these regional-type projects and how funding is gonna be divvied up. And then the other avenue for discussion is the Orange County Engineers Association. That's a networking, but we also talk about the common, you know, issues that we're facing.
Member, before we go, member Linda Verde, Ms. Downs, can you?
Sure. So, the MOE compliance, where we're at with that, we are, we're nearly closed with our books for 1819. We're, the audit field work is done, but we don't have our opinion letter yet, and we don't, we haven't issued the report. As soon as we get our opinion letter, which is scheduled for early December, then we can get the audit from OCTA on our MOE expenditures, and if we're found in compliance, then in, we expect that our money that has been held will be released to us in March. The, we fully expect that we'll meet the MOE requirements, because based on the, the numbers that we've pulled together, we're very safe, so.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. I have a question, and I don't know if you answered it while you were giving your presentation, but I know we spoke a little bit earlier. The whole, when we were talking about why are some streets being focused more than the other streets, does that have to do with the whole seal and overlay, or is that something completely different?
No, you, you have it right, and I'm gonna back up to one graphic here. So what we do is, because the slurry seal program is so important, whatever funding we have, we, we work from the bottom up, so we do a full slurry seal program, and then we do an overlay program, and, and then we worry about reconstructing streets. So what happens is, if we're falling short in funding, we might let a street that needs to be reconstructed, we might let it go, because if, if, if we were to improve and reconstruct the street, we would be putting so many resources and just taking care of one block or one little section of the city, and we would let the other streets that need maintenance, we would let that go. And so that's why sometimes you will see a street being slurry sealed that's in decent condition, and yet the street right next door that needs more help isn't getting it. And that's probably because we're running short on funding. I think the key there is to communicate with the neighborhood associations and communicate with the community as to why we're selecting the streets that we're selecting. And again, we rely on the pavement management system, so whatever funding we have, we try to maximize and improve the network PCI and get it as high as possible.
Okay. And then my second question, and I don't know if the staff can answer this, or if it's your, for you to answer, but, so now we didn't see any of the funds going towards fixing streets. So will we see this in the next budget, or are we able to suggest like, okay, here he came and he laid everything out, this is how much we think we can, can go to that? Or do we have any say in that at all?
In your advisory function to the city council, you can absolutely make recommendations to them.
Okay. Thank you. That's it.
Two technical questions. How many square feet are in one lane mile?
Oh, good question. We typically estimate the width of a lane on a freeway or a street is typically 12 feet, but because there's parking lanes and there's other lanes that are not a through lane, we just estimate it to be 15-foot wide, and a mile is 5,280 or 5,280 feet. So, a typical lane mile is about 80,000 square feet. So if you multiply 80,000 square feet times our 1,130 lane miles in the city, you do come up very close to 91 million square feet in the city.
Thank you. And then in your PMP operations summary, is the cost or the K, PCI, no, it's actually the cost that I had a question on. So your cost for option B, C, and D, is it adjusted for future costs past '25, meaning 2025 through '34?
Typically, any cost adjustments we make are very subtle. We, we might use a 1% or 2% increase per year. It's so hard to predict what's gonna happen in five or 10 years. So, what we did in this graphic that's actually up on the screen right now, is you're gonna notice that it does increase a little bit. That's been adjusted for cost, cuz we think costs are gonna be... we think costs are going to be increasing slightly. But in this other scenario that you're asking about, no, that is not inflated for cost, that's just the effort we need to bring up the overall PCI of the entire network.
Thank you.
And if I could add into that on the construction costs, they are one of the hardest things to forecast into the future, because construction costs are very, very much driven by the market. And so sometimes it's feast and famine with the contractors, sometimes the supply and demand on the materials, you know, it greatly affects those prices, so it varies quite a bit.
Thank you.
Mr. Carpenter, would you like to ask any questions?
Not really. I can't really appreciate the full presentation, unfortunately, and I do appreciate the engineer taking the time to do that, but without seeing everything, it's a little difficult, but thank you.
Perfect. Yeah, very enlightening. I really appreciate you coming here. I wish you were here to where we could talk about all the funding that you had from Major X, but maybe that will be a future presentation. It seems like we're 7.1 million short to maintain a PCI of 75. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense, and I think we have some ideas to close the gap. Like I said, solid waste is going to be maybe part of the solution. The fact that we might receive improved gas tax revenues, that might be another part of the solution. So I think we can inch our way. I'm not totally discouraged, but it is something that we have to look at.
And is every year that we're short 7.1, is that just additive to the need, or is it compound exponentially, or just compound, hopefully not exponentially, but just compound upon each other?
It does compound. When we delay overlaying a street because we don't have sufficient money, the next year or the next two years later, that street might be a reconstruction. And so it's no longer overlayable for $6 a square foot, now it's going to cost $10 or $15 a square foot. So we are at a critical point. Again, our PCI has been declining based on the funding levels that we do, or the revenue streams that we do have. So I thought, two or three years ago, when the solid waste contract first started, I thought that the solid waste contract was going to be providing part of the solution for our streets. But that contract has been delayed, and so, you know, we're hopeful that that part of the solution is going to be the solid waste contract, again, improved gas tax revenues, and improved public-private partnerships.
And to be clear, on the solid waste contract, that would be something that essentially gets passed through to residents, is that correct? So I mean, even though, I mean, it's being paid by the residents, well, residents and businesses, I suppose, across the city, is that right?
Yeah, you could see it that way. The amount that we've estimated is actually a very, very low amount, so, but every penny counts, I understand. But we're talking about pennies versus, we're not talking like a dollar, we're not talking about $5 or $10. We're talking about a few cents that we can set aside, so that from the solid waste contract, from residential and commercial services, that we can get something to repair the streets that those heavy vehicles cause.
Okay, so it's not to close the 7.1 million gap? It's just to allocate to the, what the damage the trucks are causing?
That's correct.
Going on all of our streets three times a week?
Correct.
Okay. Let's see, I had another question for you. Maybe it'll come back to me. I know that member Leo has one.
So let me ask. See if you can help me out. So water rates went up, that money goes directly to fix probably sewer pipes, water pipes. If the fee that was in the solid waste contract was high enough, let's say it's a dollar, you're talking pennies, let's say it's a dollar, and you balance it out between the residents and the businesses, maybe adjusted it. If we could get a guaranteed revenue stream from the contract, what number would you look at? Would it be the 7.1 million? Would you shoot a little higher? And I don't know how long the waste management contract is, was it three to five years, something like that normally? Or no, last year was 20, right? Okay. So think about that as you have that discussion, because from my standpoint, if it says in the contract, you know, residents pay a dollar a month, and businesses pay $2 a month, right? Or whatever it comes out to be, that'll give you predictable revenue stream for 20 years. Then when we look at 75 or 76, you have a revenue stream. So the whims of what the council does with its money doesn't affect you from doing what the residents expect to be done. It's no different than the conversation we're going on at the state level, right? People say, I want the gas tax to go to roads. Governor says, I don't think so, or I want to, I want to take it. So as we move forward, if you come up with a number that you think, that would be something that I think I would be interested in listening to and hearing, and recommending to the council, because if there is a revenue stream out there that doesn't impinge upon the voters as much, that could help us with this, because this is expensive. But more importantly, people want their roads to work. Because if my roads are flat, then my car repairs are down, right? And the flat tires are down. Because what I see is, you guys working hard to try to slurry, fill, and then all of a sudden, I see, we have Bristol, it's nicely paved, and then boom, big holes in the ground, blocked off. I'm like, there's got to be coordination. And then I have friends at SoCal Gas, they don't care about the street, they just cut the trench and put their stuff in. Same thing with Edison. I mean, I think to myself, you guys have like the worst job. Like you're competing to keep the roads running, and people, oh, no, I need to run this, I need to run this, I need to run this. So as the conversations about solid waste go forward, think about what number you might need, because to me, that's a helpful discussion to have. Because I can tell you, I think, from the voters, from the citizens oversight committee, that's what we were asked to do, make sure the money gets spent where it gets spent. And if you can figure out a way to earmark money that goes only to your department for roads, it's better than fighting over this general fund money.
Yeah, whatever.
Whatever amount that we are able to justify, it has to be legally justifiable. It has to, there has to be a nexus. It can't just be arbitrary. You know, I know the gap right now is 7.1 million, we're not talking close to that. We're just talking about the solid waste services paying for a fair share of some of the damage that they caused to the streets because of the three times-per-week pickup. And of course, the commercial operations also cause damage to the arterial streets. And so, again, we're not looking to one revenue source to solve everything. We're piecing something together, and I think that we could be moving in the right direction.
So a couple of follow-up questions. On the private-public partnerships, I think that's, I'm a big believer in that. However, I want to be cognizant that the area, that maybe areas that are not as economically well-off in the city, that we do not leave them behind, because obviously, an industrial area probably should be, you know, carrying their fair share, because they have industrial trucks, and just like you said, you know, the garbage trucks are heavier, and they cause damage in industrial areas, and you carry some of that share. But we need to make sure that we're not leaving behind our residential areas, that it would be very difficult to come up with a public-private partnership in a residential area, especially one that is maybe not economically as well-off as other parts in the city. And so I would hate to focus so much on that, that we take, you know, if we get, essentially, if you have matching funds, you know, from an industrial area, I would hate for us to take money that may help another area of the city that really needs it, to be able to get that matching fund, those matching funds. And I'd be remiss if, you know, I hear people at council, if there's an area that people talk about at council, that they complain about streets, and so maybe if you can just give a quick, something on it, on rate, Rate Street seems like that is what we hear all the time about, is that one of these areas that is in this need of red, but because we, you know, are focusing on the blue and the yellow on your chart? Go ahead.
Well, it's funny that you ask, because another committee member just asked about Rate Street also. Rate Street is funded, particularly north and south of First Street. I don't know if that's the part of Rate Street that you're referring to?
That's always under construction, yeah.
Yeah. What we're doing is, we're waiting for the streetcar construction to move away from that area, so that way we can, we can get Rate Street improved. So we would have started that project maybe a year and a half, two years ago, but because of the streetcar, once it was imminent, we had to postpone the improvements.
Okay. And then, how far, I mean, we're not, obviously, we're not spending what we need to spend, is what I'm hearing, you know, the 7.1 million dollar, what I would call a requested spending that we're not spending, so essentially, you know, a need deficit. How much do we need to be able to just get caught up to baseline, to where now you're, if you're spending what you need to, to keep that 75 PCI or higher, what is our true cumulative deficit that we need to get just to where the 7.1 carries us each year? Are we at a, or maybe that includes, maybe your 20 million includes that, but?
The 20 million that I referred to, that's what we need.
Okay.
That's what we need.
So you don't need like 10 million to get caught to a baseline, and then we're going to, now we can just maintain and do our, you know, little graph here?
No, we need, yeah. We, let's see, I'd say, what, 10 years ago, we did a bond issuance in 2008, and I believe we put together a package of 60 to 80 million dollars worth of bond-issued debt, and we're able to, we're able to rehab a number, many, actually, we're able to bring up all of our residential streets up to a certain state, a good PCI. But the unfortunate part of that is that that's that debt service that we're on the hook for for another 20 years or so. That's that 4.5 million or 4.2 million that we're trying to work down to 3.5 million. So that was a good idea back then, that was maybe more of a one-time approach. I'd say today, if we can just get a dedicated steady stream of 20 million dollars in revenue, we could maintain, and with efficiencies, with coordinating with other projects, we can probably get that PCI to get worked up a little bit. But that's the need, we need 20 million.
And it's really the 7.1 is the additional need. We already have the 12 and change.
Correct. Correct. Right.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions? Perfect, thank you. I think those are excellent, thanks. And we're now on to our annual report draft. Take it away.
Thank you. So I had sent out an early version of the draft to the committee for commentary, and I'm happy to take your comments tonight, but I wanted to kind of give you a big picture of what I'm envisioning, because I'm trying to satisfy quite a few things. I'm kind of a little, I think you guys have figured it out, I'm kind of between a rock and a hard place.
And what you do, so we know?
That would help us.
Okay. So the, I'm envisioning, big picture, that you are going to have some kind of annual report to council. You are an advisory body. Your annual report is going to be comprised of recommendations that you, as a committee, formulate, where you agree upon something, at least a majority of you agree upon, that we recommend that the city council include X amount for streets, whatever, whatever those recommendations might be. Those recommendations are not auditable things, those are really opinion pieces. And so what I'm envisioning is that there will be a complete packet, where on the top of it, it will be your report to council with your recommendations, your opinions. And then after that will be the annual report that staff prepares, that is the attempt at the document that is auditable. That we're, you know, as much as we can, just try to stick to the facts, and satisfy what we think that we can for the language of the ordinance, and yet still maintain the integrity of our general tax. And then after that would be the auditor's report, that basically says that we looked at that staff work product, and we opine that it was presented fairly. They're, based on these procedures that we did, we didn't see any reason, you know, we didn't see that they spoke out of turn in any way. It looks like what they presented was fair and reasonable. So that's what I'm envisioning. So what you have before you tonight is only the one piece of that, the thing that, you know, our attempt at trying to provide something that just is the facts and is auditable. So I've, you know, heard some comments about it already, and, you know, I've received a little bit of feedback. So I think the purpose of this meeting, so here we are on October 29th, and you have a desire to submit an annual report to city council for April through June of 2019, which is last fiscal year. So theoretically, you should be able to submit that report to council, say, by the end of this calendar year. So if, here we are on October 29th, there have been no additional special meetings scheduled, so after tonight, your next regularly scheduled meeting would be something along the lines of December 11th. So we've got, to get to the point where you can give something to city council, we've got a ways to go. So by December 11th, we can wrap up the staff piece of it, we can probably also get that auditor opinion on it, but we won't have your opinion piece, as it were. I've worked with a couple oversight committees in the past, and there are a couple of ways to do that. Because it is your report, not staff, you can either, A, assign a subcommittee to prepare your draft report. Now, a subcommittee would mean less members than a quorum, so your quorum is four, so either two or three, to go and meet some other time, because you're not subject to the Brown Act, if you're an ad hoc committee for this very purpose of drafting your first report. That committee could bring back a draft to the entire committee, you can tinker with it and finalize it. That's one way to do it. Another way to do it is to decide that it's going to be something fairly short, that maybe you have half a dozen bullet points that you want to say. And as staff, we're happy to bring up a clean Word document on the screen, and just have you make motions to narrate what that might look like. We want the first bullet point to say, we recommend the city council allocate 7.1 million dollars to street pavement. Okay? We can type that, you can see it up on the screen, you can bless it, and that can be your final report. And we'll slap it on some appropriate template for you, or whatever. That's another way that it can be done. Another way that it can be done is, quite honestly, orally, where you go to the city council, and you ask to make a presentation, like maybe you elect your chair, or your vice chair, or somebody else, or maybe, you know, all six of you want to get up and say something, where you make an oral report to the council, based on the, what you have as your attachments. So, and you can think of some variations thereof, but those are the main kind of ways that you can accomplish that goal. So I guess that, at this point, there's two things that I would, even though we're kind of, you know, a little bit late, although we did spend a lot of good time on things, there's a couple of things that I was hoping to accomplish tonight. One is to get your feedback on the staff work product. If you think I got it wrong, let me know. If you think that there's things that need to be done better, let me know. So I'd like that feedback. And then the second thing that I was hoping to accomplish is for you to at least, maybe you're not going to craft your annual report tonight, but to at least make some decisions about how you're going to go about doing that. And that maybe at your December 11th meeting, that once you've got the final report that's got the auditor's opinion on it, you can finalize your report, and we can get it to the city council. So that's what I offer for the big picture and the big process, and at that point, I would just throw it back to the committee for comment.
I have a point of clarification on the, on the, kind of our reporting period, because I think our ordinance has us making a march, which I think initially, when it first came out, I said, this doesn't make sense, I'm still not sure if it makes sense or not, but, I mean, our guiding document, you know, or not, but, I mean, our, our, our guiding document, you know, indicates that we're supposed to re-, do a March, um, annual report, um, which in my mind would be, okay, we're, you know, for this coming, March of twenty twenty, we'd be reporting on historical three months.
Mm-hmm.
And being able to give opinion or, uh, recommendations and feedback for upcoming, um, type, so are, are you suggesting that we try to accelerate that just in this first year or just, or accelerate it, you know, for now and going forward? And again, I'm co-, I'm cognizant of, once you kind of do things the first year, you know, there needs to be a reason to change it in the future?
I hope that that language said something like, "by March."
No, it, it, it actually says, "during its March meeting."
Okay. And I think, I think the intent behind that was the, you know, the thought that there was going to be four meetings a year, and so that during your December meeting, you would receive the final staff report, as it were, and the audit opinion, and then you would craft it, and then at your, um, craft your report, and then at your March meeting, you would finalize that and get it ready for council. And the idea behind getting it ready for council at your March meeting is so that it's in time for their budget deliberations, your recommendations. So, it was just trying to fit all the pieces in in four meetings and how that would go, because I think I, um, we also have your audit presentation in December. And so it makes sense that you would get your information in December, work on it, March, deliver something to the council.
Okay. Um, we, uh, for, for me, I'm fine, I'm, I think I'm actually fine with, with doing our, and, you know, the report that we're talking about right now, not necessarily your, your report, Catherine, um, but, you know, our recommendations in the annual report still in March, because then, you know, we can, you know, speak into what has happened as well as speak into the future. But what, what are the rest of your, your, your thoughts on specifically on that? And then in terms of, uh, kind of our options, um, I probably would lean more towards maybe a subcommittee, um, type, type, uh, area, but I'm probably pretty flexible on, 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 on doing that subject here to others, other thoughts. So, maybe if we could do a quick walk around?
I like, um, actually, I like the, um, we can have a subcommittee draft something, right?
Right.
But I do like the, the, what your recommendation of oral, the, not orally presenting to the council because that can be done separately, but sitting in a room, all of us, and saying, "Okay, we got the numbers in front of us. We, they spent no money on fixing roads." Or what do we want to tell the council? You know? Or for instance, you know, one of the things I, you know, thinking about what you've said and what others have said here, first of all, I think whatever we tell the council is, first of all, we've got to thank the voters. Because the voters were the smartest people in the room. They figured out we've got to fix the hole in the budget. But then after that, the voters made, were very direct with us, right? They said what they wanted the money spent on. And so I think that as we make recommendations, I think it's easier for us to talk about the recommendations, and then we can vote in the room. We like the, how that's worded, or we don't like how it's worded, and it's over. And then we don't have to get together, again, just because it's so hard to get a quorum together and get something voted on, right, to get it out. But I do think that at the March, at the March meeting, that we could do it in PowerPoint form. I think someone needs to make that presentation from the committee. Because I think, I think that we're setting the table for what the next five to ten years are going to look like. If we, if, if we do it appropriately, and by telling the council in March, before they start full budget deliberations, that would be like the way to go, "Okay, we saw how you spent it the first three months. We were in shock, we were in disagreement, or we were in agreement, and this is what we'd like to see going forward." So, to me, while I understand the concern of missing the window immediately, but I think, I like your concept of, we could set up a subcommittee, come up with some basic recommendations, right? And then slap them on the screen, and then everybody's here and says, "Okay, I like it, I don't like it," or "It doesn't include what I want." And then make your argument, and then we can vote, and that makes it easier, but also everybody gets buy-in and gets a say. That, that's kind of my, my thinking is. So, a subcommittee, come up with a batch, I don't know, five or six recommendations, bring them to the, make sure Catherine and her group gets it, and then in December, we walk through those, and we add or subtract or clarify one in December. Oh, 'cause, 'cause we're, you said we're going to get the audit report in December too, so then we can do that as well. That's just my thought in the process, just so we can kind of move the ball down the road.
Did you want to say something, Adam?
Well, I, I was, I was just going to offer, there is, there is another, another method as well, um, but I heard what you said. You like the subcommittee idea. It sounds like you like the subcommittee idea, so that's, that's great, and we'll hear from the other committee members. But just one other option to throw out is, I mean, and, and I really don't advocate for this, but it is an option, is that you could vocalize your recommendations, and much like we take minutes for your meetings, if you vocalize to us and you, you know, you, you go around the table and you say, "Okay, do we all agree that we want to recommend to the city council to add X amount of dollars for fixing streets?" Okay? We can record that, and then we can bring it back to you, you know, in writing, up on the screen, whatever, and then you can tinker with it from there. So, there, there's many a way, many ways to accomplish this. And on top of that, um, I think you've got the right idea with both the look backwards and the look forward. Your report really should cover both. Your report should say, "We see how you spent the first batch of money that was, you know, for that one quarter in fiscal year eighteen nineteen. Um, you know, we, we read the audit report. We have some thoughts about that. And then looking forward, we see how you budgeted for nineteen twenty, and here's our opinions about that and what we think that you should try to accomplish for twenty twenty-one."
Um, I'm honestly really flexible of whatever you guys want to do. I'm, whatever works for everyone, as long as I, how you guys, I think, set, sent the date last time and let us know, like, some options, then I think that works with me.
Um, well, my thoughts are, you know, kind of ping pong between the conversation of who's talking, to tell you the truth. Because, um, I think that we have an opportunity here, and it doesn't have to be that complicated, to tell you the truth. I think we could put together a very simple, um, straightforward, uh, unified communication from us to the city council, actually, early, before the March meeting. Um, in my opinion, I think during our December eleventh discussion, we should have something put together to put in front of the city council that month. I think that would be great because it's going to start setting the tone of what they're going to expect from us. And then, um, in that same meeting, start working on exactly how we want to frame up the expectations of, of the committee and how we're going to, frame up what we're going to communicate to the city council in the March meeting. I think that would be a very good idea. And we may want to consider, um, meeting, like this meeting, meeting before our March eleventh meeting, or our, our March meeting. I think that might be something that would be beneficial to us because it'll give us an opportunity to kind of, um, digest and condition the information that we want to present.
Yeah, I, I'm all for, uh, an open discussion. I think Catherine's last idea is really good, personally, um, where everybody can speak what they really feel, um, and get a consensus on that that's what the committee does want to present to the council. So, um, I'm, I'm open to that. I'm also open to the subcommittee that comes up with the bullet points, again, that we could discuss and get, uh, memorialized. Um, so, anything in my mind that gets the attention of the members is, is a good thing. So, I'm open to a variety of ideas.
Okay. Having, uh, having heard that, um, I, I, I think I actually liked the, the last, your, your last idea, Mr. Lugo.
I'm sorry, I'm in trouble.
I'm sorry. Um, in terms of maybe using that December, if, uh, if I compare it back and hopefully I, I get it right, use that December meeting as kind of the, the, the real feedback, uh, to brain, the brainstorm, the bullet points, and then refine that over maybe the next, uh, maybe a special meeting in, in January, February, to be able to finalize it in time for a March, uh, presentat-, uh, presentation. I agree that it should not just be a, um, a, a receive and file, uh, piece of paper to the, to the council, that it should be a presentation, um, because I think that's what the public deserves, um, to, to hopefully have the opportunity here. Am I, am I right in saying that that's maybe what you're envisioning with the December?
Yes. Putting a face, first of all, setting the tone with the city council to let them know where our concerns are immediately, as soon as possible. In other words, allowing our communication from our December eleventh meeting to be presented to the city council, whether orally or, um, as a statement from the committee. Initially, I think it's, it's a great way of being able to give the city council, not only that, the constituents of the city, an understanding of what we see now as a concern and where, where we want to go with it, or what we plan to go with it. And then in March, what we're presenting is the framework of our recommendations.
I think what I might be hearing you say, what might work for you based on, uh, is it, at December, okay, so theoretically, December eleventh, you come back, you get your audit report, you have a discussion, the meaty discussion of what, how some of your recommendations might go. Um, then the city council has a city council meeting, I think on December seventeenth?
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth, okay. So, your, you could elect someone from your committee, your chair, somebody else, whoever, to, or, or two of you, for that matter, to attend the city council meeting on December nineteenth and make, um, we, I, I, I can't make any promises, but it's possible that, you know, I could ask to see if you could be put up front, at the front of the meeting during, like, presentations. Um, but at the very least, you could do public comment, and you could just give the city council a preview. Um, and, and your preview might be along the lines of, you know, "City council, I'm here, um, you know, representing the committee. They asked me to come and speak to you and let you know some of the content of what our discussion was on December eleventh, and we expect to be finalizing an actual, um, report and presentation to you for March." Um, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes. I, I think my, the, the core, the cornerstone of what I'm saying, it, it has to revolve around the fact of setting the tone. It doesn't, it absolutely doesn't have to be, um, anything but positive. It needs to be positive, but the truth of the matter is this committee has concerns from day one. Um, we really want to make sure that the under, the, the, the request of accountability is something that the city council understands and something that we're working towards. So, the expect, we're setting ourselves up by speaking it out loud, by saying, "We're doing everything we can for the city council and as much for the city of San Ana and its constituents, that we are doing our best to try to set a baseline and hold the city accountable for these dollars that are being spent." Regardless of the limitations of accounting and liability of other cities and the concerns that have been expressed, I would say, by, by the city attorney and, um, this board. I think it's important. I think it's important, and if my other fellow commissioners agree, you know, I think it would be worthwhile doing it.
I, I think that laying out what we're, what we're trying to do, um, raising concerns, because there'll be general concerns, we can't give specific concerns, and then in March, we'll give our full report with recommendations. I think that's the easiest way to go because I think we all have our own concerns. We have our thoughts about what direction we want to go in. Obviously, we can't finalize those between now and then, but if we, if we set the tone, if we say, "Look, we've just begun. Really, we've just begun." Um, I think, you know, the biggest thing for us is we are trying to insert baselines and metrics into each piece of the initiative so that it's self-explanatory to the residents of San Ana. So, it's easy to read. And I think we all have concerns about, okay, how are we doing this? And I think that we're going to have to be the ones that are going to be honest and tell the, tell the residents, "Hey, there was a forty million dollar structural deficit." Because it wasn't really made clear. But I do think concerns and then recommendations, I'm, it's almost like a two-part presentation. It's like, and you can say, I don't know, you probably give an update, "The revenue's coming in." It's not that it's not coming in. It's that there are concerns that we've seen as we peel everything back, and then we'll try to build it to the recommendations in March to help the city council deliberate on what they decide to do for their budget.
Agree.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it, it does. I'm just trying to, I, I totally understand where you're going. I'm just trying to understand, like, how you're going to do that communication to city council in December.
In, in December, because there's so much stuff going on, we, we, we can send, we can do, we can send a letter. We don't have to make the presentation. But then the council's on notice that in March, we're going to make a batch of recommendations, and we've expressed some of our concerns already. Here are our recommendations in March. I think that's the easiest way because I think they've already seen the newspaper article. They probably already heard, council members have heard from us as well already. They know we have concerns.
Okay.
But it's, now we're putting it out in, in the public record.
That's, that's the point right there. That's the point right there, is to put it out in the public record because we're not a body that is just discussing this and then coming in with the report.
Right.
We're coming there early to kind of, you know, ring the bellwether and say, "Hey, by the way, this is, um, this is the facts."
Yeah.
These are the concerns, and this is our intent.
Yeah.
Period.
Okay, so, um, I don't believe that there's a, a, a needed course of action on that of them putting on the agenda for our next, next, uh, next meeting, uh, in December.
Okay.
And then at that point, um, as long as it's properly noticed, I think we can make a, uh, decide, decide there the actual, uh, medium of, of presenting that, whether that be orally, whether that be a letter, um, or, or what have you.
Okay. So, um, I have to be careful when I prepare your agenda to make sure I've got the correct wording so that you, um, you know, are truly doing what is on the agenda because of the public noticing. So, I think what I'm hearing then for the December agenda would be something along the lines of discuss and formulate, uh, discuss and prepare, uh, and preliminary, okay, discuss and prepare preliminary report to council. I think that would cover it, just to keep it simple, and then-
Right.
-that would cover everything. Okay. Thank you.
And obviously, at that time, if we decide that that's not what we want to do-
Right.
-we can. If we want to form a subcommittee for the, for the, uh, the annual, the formal annual report, we can do that. Um, but I, I think it gives us the flexibility to be able to keep that option available, um, so that we are coming to them early.
Agree. Agree. It doesn't have to, it doesn't have to be laden with detail because I think there's, you know, to a certain extent, we don't want to come in there with too much detail. I think we just want a couple bullet points, set the tone, and go from there.
Okay.
Mr. Carpenter, did you have anything to, uh, that you wanted to, to add to that? I'm sorry for, uh, not asking earlier.
Uh, no, it's okay. I, no, I, I'm in full agreement with the letter of intent, uh, and then the, uh, report or however you want to term it, uh, coming later. I'm also in favor of any additional meetings that would be required. Uh, but I think the letter of intent is a, is a very good thing, and I, I don't think it needs to be extremely lengthy. Um, I just think it needs to get, uh, you know, and obviously, I think everybody in the committee has a, a, saying general concerns. Uh, just keep them on notice, uh, as stated by every member. So, yeah, that's why I'm at.
Okay, perfect. Um, then I think the other item that Ms. Downs would, would probably like to hear about, hear from us would be, uh, some feedback on her actual sta-, uh, staff report. Um, I, I personally have some feedback, but if we want, um, I can go first. Um, you know, I mean, big picture, I think I would, I, I would like to see more detail in terms of what the actual end result and use of some of, some of this money, uh, is for. So, for example, not, the number of police officers or what the actual, uh, i- items are being done with, with the money instead of just saying, you know, so I think that, um, I can give some specific examples. Uh, I think Catherine and I sent you, uh, some, um, pretty lengthy feedback. Uh, it's probably not the best use of time to go through, um, all, all of them at this, at this time, but I think overall, the, the theme of it, and, um, you know, you've, you've read it, and would I be correct in saying that it's kind of more detail-oriented, a little bit more information to, to the public?
Mm-hmm. Absolutely. Yeah.
Um, anyone else have any, any, any thoughts, agree that, you know, w- with me, disagree, like, like the- Anyone else have any, any thoughts, agree that, you know, with me, disagree, like, like the kind of the, I think this would be more, what I would say, high level as opposed to more detailed? Whereas I'm wanting a little bit more detail personally, but.
I agree too.
I personally like to see more detail myself. Again, these are just general terms here, so. And again, I think it is a, for our accountability to the public, I think that would be a very good thing to have a little more detail.
I would recommend, and I am supportive of that, but what I would recommend is maybe support or reference documents towards the end, because I think the structure is well-built, it's simple, it's good to the eye, you know. But if somebody really wants to dig into it, which I think a lot of people are interested in doing that, I'm one of those kind of people. I like going into the numbers and grabbing that stuff and throwing it on an Excel spreadsheet and actually seeing where the pivots are and where the trends are. I think it's, I think it would be a nice thing to have.
Yeah, and to that end, if what I'm hearing is a consensus from the committee about the level of detail, we can absolutely do that, and you're absolutely right, at that point, I would go with an attachment to the report that's like a table that lists everything, instead of trying to parse it out and this and that. Maybe I'd still keep the one summary table that categorizes it by the ballot language so that it's easy for somebody to point to and go, okay, you know, fixing streets, zero. But then, yeah, I'd have the support in, in great detail as requested.
Yeah, I, to me, having gone through many state budgets myself, if you say, like, I saw one of the lines in there was building, building roof replacements, have the attachment and say which buildings we put the new roofs on, that kind of stuff, because people go, wait a second, they spent this money on whatever, what did they, I never saw it. And you guys obviously issue the contracts and do the deals and whatever, but then there's nothing the voters can complain about. Because then they say, oh, they put a new roof on whatever building, okay, I get it. Yeah, to me, that's, and you probably have the links, you can figure out a way to link it to documents online or wherever they're at, but to me, that's probably the easier way to do it, because when you put it in the actual report, it just becomes voluminous.
And my other comment, I think, would be that it seems like we pivot from how you're reporting 1819 expenditures to, I'm much more, I'm able to follow the 1920 format much easier than, than I am the 1819. Partially because it's the three, it's three months, it wasn't budgeted for, you're filling a gap, you're filling, you know, we're not, you know, we're not not spending the money, and so it's, I wouldn't mind seeing the format being similar to, to our 1920. And obviously, a big part of that is going to be, you know, the fill-in-the-gap type, type, type funding.
I have no idea how I would assign the dollars to those categories and the specific spending amounts for 1819. I really cannot tell you, because after, because the 1819 budget was adopted, expecting that we were going to use reserves. So the 1819 budget wasn't necessarily increased, whereas 1920, I had a beginning point, and then I had an increase, and I could tell you what all the increases were. And so if we didn't necessarily increase our 1819 budget, all we did was just avoided a use of reserves. And there's some nuances to that, but this is the big picture. I have no idea how I would assign those dollars and say that, you know, 1 million was spent on nine, you know, police officers for 911, or a million dollars was spent on, I really have no idea how I would do that.
Okay, when I read it, how I see it, it's just two buckets. Avoided use of, of reserves. Of 10.2 million, I think, and then the remainder, which would be five, five million, 18,000 and change, would be based upon your last paragraph to where it went to police officers. I mean, that's, when I boil it down to where, hey, what are we saying here? Where did, because that's what you're charged with, is, you know, you know, reporting to the public and to council, where did, where did the 15.2 million dollars of major X revenue, where was that expended? And to me, when I read this, it really boils down to, it's, we avoided using 10.2 million of, 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 shoot, reserves. And then the remainder is really for the Police Officers Association, your last paragraph here. That's how I interpret what you're saying, but what I see in this, in this paragraph, in the 1819 expenditures is a table that adds to 13.6, and I'm trying to relate that up to the 15.2 of revenue. And then we add in, there's another, you know, 4 million and change of, of Police Officers Association comp increases. To where I, I just don't know if the, like, the 1.5 million of planned labor, you know, expenditures that we're not, you know, implementing, if that's just muddy in the water, because what we're really trying to say is where did 15.2 million go?
The, the reason that I did not put the police officer contract increase into that table was because the city council didn't approve a budget for it. They ended up having to spend less money on something else to be able to afford that 4.2 million.
Okay, well, I'll ask the plain language question, where did 15.2 million go? I mean, that's really what the chart, the question is.
And that's like dumping a cup of water into an aquarium and saying, there's a spout on the other side, where did that cup of water go? So I would, I'm, forgive me, I will try to, I've heard what you said, and I will try to comply with the committee's wishes, but I want you to understand it is not as cut and dry as what it may appear to be.
So when you say that the, I mean, the, the budget did not include any major X revenue. So no matter where the money was spent, it was not budgeted. And so when you say, hey, I'm not sure if I want, if it'd be accurate to say, you know, it's Police Officers Association, because it wasn't budgeted for, but none of it was budgeted.
There, the 10.2 use of general fund reserve was budgeted.
That's right.
The 1.5 million dollars of staff cost savings was budgeted.
But, and those were not implemented?
Correct.
Okay, so, so, okay, so we're 10.2, 1.5, and then we're, I mean, by your table, you're saying, hey, we had 1.9 of revenue that did not come in.
Yeah, and I think.
And so that's a use of major X revenue.
I think I may be able to tie that to an increase in reserve, so I may be able to drop it into that bucket.
So basically, the check was in the mail, and the check didn't come in until July 1, but they spent the money. They made some agreements in April, May, and June to spend the money, and it came out the other end. But none of the money was allocated to the 1819 budget, because they didn't have the money, you didn't have the money.
Right, but I.
It was on the come.
I, I think I can satisfy the use of buckets with the tying, because I, you know, I know what the numbers look like, even though we don't have an audit opinion yet, and of course, I'm not going to share them with you because we don't have an audit opinion yet, but I think I can tie that 1.19 million, the difference, I'm sorry, whatever it was, the difference between the, you know, the 10.2 and the 1.5 and the 15 million, I think I can tie that difference to an increase in reserve, which is another bucket. We either spent the money on something or we increased our reserves, right? So I think that's how I can accomplish it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds, I mean, I think you probably get where I'm going, then just, I'm, you know, I'm a finance person, and I don't know the basic, you know, answer to the question of where did the 15.2 go, other than, you know, the 10.2 and the 1.5? I'm pretty clear on that, but then, you know, beyond, beyond, you know, and I would hate for someone to say, oh, no one knows where the 3 million dollars went. Well, you're right. Does anyone else have comments that might help Ms. Downs prepare her report? Go ahead.
I have something simple. I think it's, and it's very basic, actually, but I think it would help a ton for the layman that is reading this, like me. First of all, add the month that, for, for the fiscal year of when it starts and ends. So if we're representing 19 and 20.
Ah, yes.
Yeah, add the month on there. The second would be add the total revenue the city actually takes in, in a very basic column or, or bullet point, and also how much money the city currently has budgeted to, to expend, its expenditures. And then the deficit dollar that was there, or it will be there, or more importantly, I guess it's actually, you know, not credit, but what's the word?
Well, for 1819, that deficit that you're looking for, the difference between revenues and expenditures, that was the 10.2 million.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm talking about more so for the 19 and 20. So the report in and of itself starts off with saying, this is what we're, this is what we have, this is what we spend.
Very good.
And then this is the surplus.
Okay.
You know, and then that way, as people start walking into it, they're walking into the details, and it grows. The details grow as the more you read and the more you want to reference it.
Okay, so, so you want the full general fund budget for 1920.
Right.
Both the revenues and the expenditures, and what that's going to show you is that the revenues are $550,000 more than expenditures.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what it's going to say. Okay.
And do we, do you show any? And do you show anywhere when you're doing this, that we got additional property tax revenue, and we got the new, and the internet sales tax revenue? Because to me, that's, that's found money, it's one-time money. I don't know if we're going to get the same thing next year. Maybe we do, maybe we don't. So because, because what, I think what you're hearing from us, and especially from me, is one-time fund spending is really good. Recurring expenses are really bad. And we've incurred some ongoing expenses, I don't know how we're going to pay for them. I mean, the cop contract is really expensive, we haven't even dealt with the rank-and-file folks here. So as we go forward, right, we get, we got lucky this year, right? You got an additional, what, 5 million dollars of property tax revenue, 1 million dollars of sales, internet sales tax that I don't know if you budgeted for, or if you were hoping, but we got it. Because to me, that's found money. That's not budgeted money, that's found money. And what did it go to? My guess is it went to pay increases or whatever they decided to do.
You know, September 17th, 4 million of it got appropriated right away.
Right away, just to, was it the police management contract, is that what it was?
No, 1 million was to homelessness, 1 million was to youth services, and 2 million was to roadway maintenance to free up the money for street paving.
So we have to figure out as we go through this each year, since we're going to be here each year.
Yeah.
How you, because you find, we get lucky and we get money.
Sure.
That money's got to be accounted for, because it's not measure X money, but yet somehow gets included in kind of expenditures, in general expenditures, because it's all general fund money. So if they were to change, let's say we agree to the 7 million dollars for roads each year, right, and we make that recommendation. But one year, the council only puts 5 million in, right? From, that you can attribute to measure X, but that 3 million dollars came in from somewhere else. We would have to figure out how we, how we report that, because someone will say, well, wait a second. They said 7 million, why is it only 5 million in 2022? Well, it's only 5 million because X came in the door. So you can answer those questions as people read this, this report. So as you go through it, how you include the extra stuff, because you're the one that has to cobble the whole budget together. We're lucky enough, we only have measure X to deal with, but yet measure X goes into the general fund. So however you want to do it, because we had, we had, we got lucky this year, we got additional property tax revenue and internet sales tax, I don't know if that's going to be like this, should be, right, with new basis on the properties, should be, but we don't know. And thank God, they only did one-time funds, right? So to me, that's, because we want to give them general parameters, they'll make decisions, obviously, but recommendations. One-time funding, I mean, I don't know how much deferred maintenance we got sitting around the city, plenty probably. I'd rather spend measure X money on that. Like roads, fix a road once, what do you say? Seven years, you got to come back? I give a cop a pay raise, he retires in two years, I'm done. That money's gone. So you've heard enough of me.
Thank you.
I have another comment that, on the, on 27 to 28, so budgeted fiscal 1920 expenditures. You, I think in the initial draft, you had in the unrestricted general reserve purpose, the numbers that were probably tied to the last page.
Yeah, and we noticed, we noticed that as we were sitting here tonight, we both pointed it out and went, oh, no, something happened at that table. So this printed version was an error.
Okay.
What was sent to you via email as the early draft.
Right.
Had it correct, because that is the intent, to tie these subtotals of this table into this.
All right, excellent, yeah, and I was, when I saw that, I was, yeah, okay, perfect.
It was a total, like, whoopsie.
Excellent, and, and just to, I know Member Martinez isn't here, but I think what she, you know, when she was talking about what this, what this committee really has control of, she would be referring to that one-time column here of, okay, well, this is money that was budgeted and will be spent 1819, or I'm sorry, 1920, that of, it'll add up to when you add in the 2 million, you know, 5 million and change. That's really, I mean, you know, to speak to what I think she was saying, but I think it was important, that's really the, you know, it should disappear next year to where, if it truly is one-time, that, you know, there's 5 million and change that is really open to, you know, figuring out where this goes, because the other stuff, I mean, if you want to, if we want to cut, cut this stuff, then that means reduce services of stuff that we've.
And I, and I can let you know that I have very clearly instructed to my staff, and they have it on their list of duties for the budget, that they will be pulling out that one-time money from the draft budgets when the department first sent, so.
Perfect, you've read my mind of, you know, trying to, you know, fast-forward a couple months, although you're probably already working on the budget for, for next year. Okay, does anyone else have any, any, any comments? All right, well, I think that is, that is that one, and since there, any public comments? All right, and so we can end, I think, with staff, staff member comments. I'll save for my, do I have another item?
Oh, yes, it's the, it's the revenue update, and we just put it on your agenda just to make it official, although you have been receiving my revenue updates by email. So I can just give you the latest update for fiscal year 1920, which is.
10, 4, 6, 4.
The. Yeah, so in July for the, I'm sorry, in September, we received for the period of July an advance of 4,354,500, and then for the period of August, which we received in October, 6,110,120, for a total, third quarter to date, two months, 10,464,620. So a little bit ahead, if you're figuring 5 million a month to reach 60 million a year, but not ahead enough for me to run to the city council and say, you have additional money to appropriate.
Is there, I mean, is, it seems like there, I mean, sales tax to me should be somewhat, you know, a per-month annualization. Is, is it to be expected that it's kind of fluctuates from one to another?
Well, the, you might have, you might not remember this from the sales tax presentation that we gave you at the first meeting, but they, the way that the state pays, it's really on a quarterly basis, and so month one and two of the quarter are advances. They really pull their punches and give you like a minimal advance. And then the third month payment for that quarter is the true-up payment that takes you up to your actuals. So it is always going to look like low, low, higher, low, low, higher, as you're going through the, yeah.
So I mean, this is encouraging in terms of, because we're on a straight annualization, we'll be above the 15.
We hope.
You know, so this is encouraging news, am I?
It is encouraging.
Okay, and then the other thing that changed from your draft on the, was the corrections, I think, from August, possibly? Is that, are we going to, is it, we're going to continue to see maybe a little bit more come in on corrections? Or is that an unknown?
Unknown, it's possible, but unknown.
Okay. Do we get any other, any other items on that?
I just wanted to pass out these contact little cards for public works in case.
Perfect, thank you.
In case you need the signals, fix streets, potholes.
Excellent.
And do you happen to have a card? Oh, boy.
Okay, so now we can go on to public comments, and if there's, seeing none, we're going to member comments. to member comments, and I am, I'll be the first to say thank you very much for tonight, I know we've gone long, and I've talked way more than enough, so go ahead, rest of you. No comments.
No comments.
No comments, and thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Carpenter?
No, again, thanks to everybody for putting their time there, and thanks for having me on the phone.
All right, do we have any staff member comments?
No, we've talked enough too.
All right, well, I think that this is adjournment, and our next meeting will be December 11th, here in the same spot, 6 o'clock, and look forward to seeing everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you.